Okay, we have now returned to open session. Appreciate everybody. Everybody looks like they're seated and ready. The Chair would request a motion to approve the personnel report. It's been moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. And then we have a school board proclamation proclaiming the celebration of LGBT Pride Month in June 2024, and we're going to share that now, starting with Mike.
Whereas on June 28th, 1969, transgender activists Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera became the pioneers for LGBT rights following the Stonewall uprising in New York City, where law enforcement raided the Stonewall Inn and caused days of violent clashes with protesters. Marsha and Sylvia's fearless leadership marked the beginning of a movement to outlaw discriminatory laws and practices against LGBT individuals. And?
Whereas June is a symbolic month to celebrate people who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, pansexual, asexual, gender fluid, non-binary, intersex, as well as heterosexual and cisgender allies. It commemorates the impact that LGBT individuals have had on local, national, and international history, as well as present-day visibility and advocacy. And?
Whereas throughout our state and country, the lives of LGBT individuals, especially those who are people of color, disabled, or members of other historically marginalized communities, continue to face systemic discrimination, including restricted rights, social stigma, challenges assessing healthcare and other basic social services, mental health support, and startling rates of violence. And?
Whereas throughout 2024, there continue to be anti-LGBT bills with the intent to restrict gender diverse representation in school curriculum, athletics, and healthcare access. Moreover, Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools acknowledges that recent legislation in North Carolina, such as, for example, Senate Bill 49, attacks LGBT students, staff, and families, reduces equitable representation in curriculum, and has detrimental effects on social and emotional health. And?
Whereas Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools is committed to fostering an environment that values intersectional visibility and support for LGBT students, staff, community members, and others. We recognize their remarkable bravery and authenticity while also affirming the gender identity and gender expression of our LGBT district and community members. And whereas LGBT Pride Month, we are reminded that our community cannot succeed unless the school system is committed to collaborating with the LGBT community to further its effort of forming strong relationships in a culturally sensitive, responsive, and appropriate way. Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools reaffirms its opposition to discrimination, prejudice, homophobia, and transphobia. And?
Now, therefore, we, the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools School Board, do hereby proclaim June 1st or June 30th, 2024, to be LGBT Pride Month in Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools, and invite schools to implement developmentally appropriate representative and inclusive observations that center the narrative of LGBT history, families advocacy, and gender diversity, and be it further resolved that the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools School Board strongly encourages our students, staff, and community to observe, recognize, and celebrate the presence and contributions of LGBT individuals to our country, North Carolina, our beautifully diverse county, and our schools, not only during June, but throughout the school year, proclaiming the sixth day of June 2024. Thank you all. Very nice. Mr. Jenks, do I turn this to you here? I see something about leadership to inspire future talent.
No, sir, I'm afraid not.
Not you. It's on my agenda. Does anybody?
That's okay. We're ready.
You're ready? Oh, okay, then thank you. It's Brandy I turned to.
Good evening. I'm Robin Buckram, Executive Director of Secondary Schools, and I'm here to bring you a moment of celebration from our School Leadership Division in alignment with our district's strategic plan, specifically Priority Three: Empowering, Equipping, and Investing in Our People. This year, we led an Emerging Leaders Program, which is directly tied to our work and key strategic action around developing strong leadership pipeline programs where we grow our own talent from within the organization. Out of this action came Leadership to Inspire Future Talent, the Leadership to Inspire Future Talent Program, or LIFT. This year, thirteen talented individuals from elementary, middle, and high school were nominated by their principals because they're showing up in their buildings as having promising leadership potential. The cohort began in December and ended in May. We met once a month, and every participant had a mentor and participated in job shadowing of district leaders from various departments. Our time together included panel discussions, resume building support, leaning into vulnerability as a strength as a leader, and embracing courage to do the right thing for children. Our cohort ended with an Action Impact Project that was presented to district leaders and mentors along with a mock interview exercise. I want to say thank you to Brandy Reeves and to Dr. Hamlet for the support I received from both of you to design and implement this program and make it a meaningful experience for the participants, and also to help contribute to the vision and mission of this district in the area of school leadership. We asked some of the participants to be here tonight, but some of them were busy leading respective programming in their school communities. This is a very busy time of year for us, and some just had other obligations tonight. But I do have a statement from one, and we do have one of our participants who's here tonight. One of our participants, Miles Aiken, from Carboro High, sent this statement. "I really enjoyed my LIFT experience, especially because I got to meet fellow educators in the district I normally would not have met. Our district's strategic plan specifically mentions empowering, equipping, and investing in our people, and it makes me feel good that there are tangible steps in place like LIFT to cultivate talent that's already in our buildings." The other participant, Chelseaa, she can come join me. Chelseaa's from Smith Middle School, and she's here to speak a little bit about her experience, and that will conclude our presentation.
Dr. Hamlet, members of the Board, District Leaders, colleagues, guests, good afternoon. My experience with the LIFT program, it was the right motivation that I needed to expand my knowledge and continue with the development of my leadership growth. I was able to build a strong professional network, establish relationships, mentors, leaders, and leverage these connections for personal and professional growth. Furthermore, I was able to learn about my leadership voice, how to navigate my leadership strengths, and leverage my leadership areas of growth. I do want to extend appreciation to Dr. Buckram for her leadership and her vision, which has helped me in establishing my Action Impact Project, which was also aligned with my, with our SIT, School Improvement Plan, priority and goal. And this program has helped me develop some strategies and implement some areas of strengths and some activities in my building, along with other colleagues, to help our students, especially our Black and Brown students, with the disproportionality of, or the discipline of, for all of us. Thank you. I also want to thank my principal, Ms. McAllister. She has been also very instrumental in helping my, the team, the SIT team, and she's been very instrumental with our students as well. She has developed a culture for our students that they are able to go to her whenever they need to, and build the safety net that the students need. So, that's my experience. Thank you all for your continued.
Thank you.
Dr. Buckram, thank you both. We appreciate that. Any other announcements or recognitions that I may not know about? Okay. That is going to take us to public comment. What did I miss?
Consent.
Oh, thank you. Ah, details. I'm working off my cellphone tonight. I left my laptop at home, and so it's one of those, you know, I can barely see the agenda here. It brings us to consent agenda in all seriousness. The Chair requests the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move?
A second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And then that gets us to public comments, is that right? All right. I got my order mixed up here. Before we start tonight, public comments, we have a lot of people signed up. It's pushing sixty. That usually means a few more people will come in, and so we're unfortunately going to have to limit presenters to one minute each tonight. Once we get started, Ms. Wallington is somewhere here. She's going to call your names off of this. Well, maybe I can see the names. We have a new system tonight, and everybody's name is up here on the screens in the order that you're going to be called, so as you see yourself, you'll know you're coming up next, you all students come in. Since the students are already here, this is a third grade class from Carboro, we're going to have this group do their public comments first, and then I have a little disclaimer to read everybody for the rest of the evening. But welcome, Carboro third graders. Would you care to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about who you are, and then go ahead with your presentation?
Oh, yes, sir. We thought we had to keep it to one minute. My name is Sarah Brown, and I teach in the third grade dual-language program. These are some of our students here. I have Louisa, Zane, Jenny, Millie, Annie, and Athena, who about a month ago decided that they were quite concerned to see single-use plastics in our cafeteria even being lacked, and they noticed that there was an uptick in that. And so they took it upon themselves to address this issue. We interviewed the Director of Food Service, Mr. Leslie Simmons from the district, and they have a petition, and now they have a speech for you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for letting us attend this meeting. We want to address the issue of single-use plastics in the Carboro Elementary Cafeteria.
It can affect the environment in several ways. All of these plastics end up in the landfill. We are covering land that would be beautiful for us with trash.
Imagine two hundred fifty forks a day times one hundred, times one hundred eighty days times eighteen schools. That's eight hundred and ten thousand forks. Just imagine how much trash that is.
We have interviewed Mr. Simmons and are aware of the complications and the fact that it may be difficult to change. We are here to let you know how concerned we are and as an encouragement to make that change.
We are not the only ones concerned. Over the past few weeks, we have collected one hundred sixty-five signatures on a petition asking to end the use of single-use plastics. Thank you for your time.
Okay. The, have to read our disclaimer, just so everybody can hear it. The Board recognizes the vital importance of listening to varied points of view on programs and issues facing the Board of Ed or the school system, and encourages public comments about educational issues. Would recognize tonight, please state your name, and if you're speaking for an organization, the name and identity of the organization. Speakers are reminded that neither personal attacks nor obscene abuse of or defamatory language is permitted. Board members may ask clarifying questions, but typically will not engage in dialogue with the speaker or the public. Each speaker tonight will have just one minute to present comments. The remaining time will be indicated on the tablet clock here in front of Ms. Jenkins. When you're out of time, please conclude your remarks. To begin, we recognize school improvement team representatives, teacher organizations, and/or high school student government representatives, followed by public comment. Are there any representatives of these groups, and if so, please come forward? Okay. Next, between myself and Ms. Wallington, we'll call individual speakers to come forward to the podium. When you're recognized, please state your name, and if you're speaking for an organization, the name of the organization.
First up is Heather Kennealy.
Good evening, Mr. Griffin, and Ms. Jenkins, and Dr. Hamlet. Good evening, you guys. I'm Heather Kennealy. I'm a part of a Concerned Parents of Chapel Hill and Carboro. We've submitted a packet for all of you to review that summarizes all of our concerns about the plans for our school district going forward. Your plans give and do things we do not need per your own reports. I would say we don't need, want, or recommend, to be honest. Your SAPO report in 2023, based on future student membership in this town, there's no need for a middle school. There's no showing of a new addition for a middle school. We don't need, we don't have the students. We don't need it. Why are you making it a priority? Why rebuild a McDougal Middle School, move it to the outskirts of town, destroy the two largest, because you're destroying SDs as well, but destroy the largest walking zone in the community when McDougal Middle only needs an auditorium? There's no need for additional schools. Also, the Colbreath Plan, I guess you're going to, the plan currently is destroy Colbreath and rebuild one. Colbreath wasn't even a priority, and Woolport didn't even consider the four-point-nine million dollars that went into it. Redistricting is hard, but this is tearing up five school communities. We said in our letter, it's like taking, like taking a baby from a parent. We scare, we care about these schools. Please reconsider. Start over. Look for alternatives. Thank you.
Caroline Goodnight?
And I understand people have strong feelings about things at public comment. If we could just hold our applause as much as possible, it just helps get the next speaker up here a little faster. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Hamlet? My name is Caroline Goodnight, and I'm finishing my sophomore year at Carboro High School. Entering my freshman year in 2022, our school started and then transferred to the AB block schedule, separating our bell schedule from Chapel Hill and East Chapel Hill High School. Each class period is around ninety minutes with mandated breaks, including real talk and flex time. While it is apparent that our school is vastly different from the other two high schools, it is an efficient way of learning and completing work. Other students and I have found that while it is hard to get used to, the schedule allows students to complete homework assignments, projects, and make up tests because of the schedule. For example, if I miss a test for a class because of an appointment, I have the opportunity to make up the test during flex time block. While I am one opinion many adolescents in this district, the schedule is beneficial towards me, as I have been diagnosed with ADHD and anxiety since I was nine years old. Managing work can be challenging for me, and this has reduced my workload and has benefited me and other peer members. I request the delaying of the vote for more analysis and evaluation of the AB block schedule. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Angela Light?
Good evening. I'm Angela Light. I'm co-chair for Equity for Education, known as E4E. Tonight, I'm here to highlight the critical importance of equity in our school system and the role of civil discourse in achieving it. Equity means providing each student with the opportunities and resources needed to succeed. Recognizing that every student is unique and may require different learning approaches is most important. By committing to equity, E4E would like to ensure that all students have the opportunity to reach their full potential regardless of background, race, and ethnicity. We believe that achieving true equity requires more than resources. It requires a culture that of respect and understanding, and it is imperative that we foster an environment where open and respectful dialogue is encouraged. This means listening to different perspectives, engaging in constructive dialogue, and working collaboratively. By prioritizing both equity and civil discourse, it's our hope that we can create a more supportive, effective education system for all of our students. Thank you.
Sally, Goodnight?
Good evening. She's already introduced me. My daughter is right back there. I am here to suggest that the Board and Administration consider the AB block schedule currently in place at Carboro High School. It is my opinion and that of my rising eleventh grader that allows for teachers to cover material adequately, address questions, and actually provide differentiated instruction for students. Teachers have time to get to know students, their academic levels, meet them where they are in class. They also are allowed to provide extra support and accelerate their learning pace if that's what they need. My daughter finds flex time so beneficial, she uses that time to check in on her subject knowledge, make up tests when she's sick, or at an athletic event. The current block, scheduled time for flex time is ninety minutes. Using the AB block across the district would allow for teacher collaboration across the district instead of reinventing the wheel. I started my timer at twenty minutes. I'm finishing up here. We've seen three speakers and done the other stuff. Thirty-five minutes goes like that. Thank you.
Heather Thompson?
Good evening. Thank you for having us here, and also thank you for being here and for serving on the Board. It cannot be an easy job. I'm here to just point out the magnitude of the school bond plan, restructuring schools, rebuilding schools, consolidating schools, closing schools, potentially moving thousands of children, and eliminating potentially some staff as well. A plan of this magnitude calls for more time and more effort put into it, and it even requires the levying of a task to pull, a tax to pull off this plan. It needs more consideration by the Board. It needs more details, more collaboration with the towns of Chapel Hill and Carboro. And my question is, how is this Board going to make sure that this plan is more holistic and something that ensures the public can trust that the district can effectively spend this money? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Brooks Derrif?
Good evening. I'm Brooks Derrif, a member of the Equity for Education Action Group. It is understandable and not surprising that many of those who have benefited most from the status quo would vociferously resist the four-by-four block schedule. With every change comes uncertainty, and so for all concerned, at least a measured leap of faith. But the four-by-four block schedule would be no blind leap. The Administration presentation on May sixteenth demonstrated that the four-by-four block schedule can accommodate a variety of student tracks, and has great promise to deliver the greatest opportunities to the greatest number of students. And it is the acknowledged duty of the district to do just that, to serve not just those, for example, with ample out-of-school safety nets and support, but also those who are without such advantages. And so, to benefit all our students, I strongly urge you to support and approve the four-by-four block schedule. Thank you.
Samantha Carney?
Hi all. I'm Samantha Carney. At a former chaotic workplace, we used to say, "Move fast and break things." Well, that's exactly what is happening here. Things, precious, priceless things, are being broken. I understand that this is likely not how you all intended this to go, but somehow, a two-year-long process got fumbled in the last several weeks, and here we are. I also understand that this is deeply complicated, and there are numerous factors to consider in approaching how to improve our schools. But here's my little movie pep talk for you. If a bunch of engineers could figure out how to literally fit a square peg in a round hole using nothing but plastic bags, cardboard, and duct tape to get Apollo 13 safely back to Earth over fifty years ago, I have no doubt that district staff working in collaboration with parents, community members, and relevant experts can figure out a way to minimize, if not eliminate, so-called pain points in the plan, and improve our schools without causing unnecessary harm to our students. Students should not be collateral damage of facility and space planning. Dream bigger, aspire higher. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alithia Austin. I am a proud member of Equity for Education, the Action Group. I'm a Chapel Hill native, and I am a product of the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools. I'm also a former parent and also a former employee, winning the National Teacher of the Year in nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six for the local Head Start programs. Chapel Hill is supposed to be a liberal city and so inclusive. Well, actually, I'm here to tell you, you're behind. It gives me pride in letting you know that currently, more than ninety percent of North Carolina schools are operating on the four-by-four block. The top ten schools currently, the top ten school districts are currently operating on the block. We will, we all know that this block is going to help our children, some more than others. So for the sake of the children, please pass the block tonight. Thank you.
Karen Vandersee?
Good evening. I'm Karen Vandersee, and I'm also with Equity for Education. At the last Board meeting, the public comments happened before the informative presentation put forth by Doctors Trice and Bales. So when I spoke, I suggested we consider Carboro High School's schedule at all three high schools, because I hadn't seen any other schedule as potentially effective among those posted in the written reports. Then I watched the presentation about the four-by-four block, and I began to understand how it could help kids who co-enroll at Durham Tech, and how it can serve our English-language learners in ways that other schedules cannot. By the end of the presentation, I was convinced that the block schedule would be one key change we should make to improve the opportunity gap for the students who need it the most. CHCCS has sought to erase the opportunity gap for decades, and adopting the four-by-four block is one step in the right direction. I hope you will vote in favor of it tonight. Thank you.
Diane Martin?
Good evening. I'm Diane Martin, a member also of E4E, here to speak in favor of the four-by-four block schedule. I direct my comments to school board members as well as to concerned parents. I speak for my expertise in teacher training over the past forty years. I've trained hundreds of teachers to use technology effectively, and several hundred university professors with more new engaging teaching techniques. Last meeting, we heard from a statistics teacher who has taught at Chapel Hill High for thirty years state that he would retire if the block schedule was adopted. Board members and parents, this is not a bad thing. It suggests a teacher doing the same thing for thirty years, not open to new teaching strategies to address different learners and a different way to use classroom time and space. The block schedule requires top-notch teachers. A real benefit of the block schedule will be an infusion of new teachers trained to effectively use a ninety-minute time period to help diverse learners, all learners, succeed. Thank you.
Sheila Black?
Hi, good evening. I'm a parent of two kids in Chapel Hill and have lived in this town for twenty years. Schools like McDougal are the hearts and hubs of the community. We need to keep schools in our neighborhoods. To quote EPA guidance on school location decisions, which was not referenced by your consultants, building schools on undeveloped land away from neighborhoods leads to underinvestment in the community core, increased public spending, traffic congestion, accidents, pollution, and loss of open space. Keeping schools in neighborhoods they serve, reusing infrastructure, and renovating buildings conserves energy and resources and preserves our natural environment. This plan needs to align with our town's commitments to prioritize environmental sustainability and mitigate climate change. We need to keep schools and our communities intact and not waste resources on building a new school we do not need. Unfortunately, this current plan Unfortunately, this current plan undermines our communities and town commitments. Please align with Chapel Hill's mission and values, learning, serving, working together to build a community where people thrive. Thank you.
Peter Halpin.
He's outside. I think he's in the other room.
Peter Halpin?
They said the screen was lagging in there. So, I don't know.
There's someone out there that has access to the argument. I told him he's on the wall, not speaking. Oh, shit. Sorry. I guess there's a lag in the other room. Sorry about that. Good evening. I'm Peter Halpin, a McDougal parent. I'm here because I think about the bond proposal. I'm here about the bond proposal because I think the plan before the board is not being called what it really is. It's a downsizing plan. Once you figure out which schools to close, it's going to be easy to spend that money. The plan distributed on May 15th calls for over 1,000 schools or 1,000 seats to be taken out of the elementary school system. To accomplish this, it's proposed to displace over 850 students from McDougal in Estes. This isn't a bug. This is a feature of this plan. But the plan doesn't even have the courtesy to say where those kids are going to go to school, where their teachers are going to work. I really think that the district should consider apologizing for proposing a plan with such stark winners and losers. And I really hope that the board will begin to be more honest with us about why our schools need to be closed and what the utilization rate is supposed to be. I think we can get a better plan. Please work with us to do it.
Good evening. My name is Sean Hanlon. I'm a student, a parent of a student in McDougal Elementary and Middle School and a member of the MES School Improvement Team. I'd like to thank the board for the chance to speak. I know that each of you and everyone in this room wants to deliver the best and most equitable education to every student in this district. But the current plan, it will not meet those goals. The plan is based largely on addressing the facilities findings from the consultant report. But schools are more than buildings. We need to explore alternative plans that incorporate a range of considerations, including equity, sustainability, community engagement, and wellness, all which are aligned with the core values of our strategic plan, but the current plan falls short on. Releasing such a plan in a complete form that has such broad impact on so many people is wrong. We need to hear from teachers. We need to hear from families and students. We need to talk about busing. We need to talk about walk zones. We need to talk about uncertainty around teacher jobs and staff redundancies. We can do better. And this community is ready to work with the board to identify plans that can meet the needs of our communities and the values of our schools.
Leah Milks.
Good evening. I am Leah Milks. I am the incoming PTA president at McDougal Elementary School. So, on behalf of my community, I'm here about the bond plan. Not surprisingly, I don't feel like this plan is ready. It feels thrown together very quickly to meet a deadline for the bond vote. It's not acceptable to ask our community to vote yes on this plan by making us feel like our schools will fall to pieces if we don't and that we don't have another option. We want to see the input of community members and leaders, collaboration with all of the stakeholders, and research that backs this plan up. This seems founded on the ideas of few, not the thoughtful input of many. I would like to see a plan that is not putting money into a middle school that we don't need, that is not busing 1,500 more kids all over town, that's not violating the district policy and the environmental commitment of our town to maintain walk zones, that's not displacing all of the students from five of our schools and many other students just after they recovered from the pandemic, that's not giving our teachers so much uncertainty that they are already looking for new jobs. There are better plans out there, and I think we can come up with a better one together. Thank you.
Mark Siegel.
Good evening. I'm Mark Siegel. I'm the parent of two McDougal Elementary School students, and I'm going to see how fast I can talk. I've got one 3rd and one 5th grader, and they've both been going to McDougal since kindergarten. I would love to be able to support the bond measure because I know the school district needs the funding, and I believe that all students and teachers deserve the best facilities we can provide. And I'm happy to do my part by paying increased taxes to fund a facilities upgrade if necessary. As said, I cannot vote for this bond under the current plan. We moved to our neighborhood because of the school walk zone and the incredible community that exists as a result. Every day, rain or shine, our kids walk or bike to school with their friends. Every day, my wife and I have the opportunity to connect with our neighbors live and in person during that daily walk. Because of this, there's a tremendous sense of community around the McDougal schools. The plan as proposed would be an absolute disaster for this community. In my opinion, it would destroy our daily sense of community and togetherness. Not only that, the plan is based on a very narrow set of data, considering only the capacity and conditions of each facility and the projected cost to upgrade. Takes into no account the impact it would have on communities, the environment, equitable access to services, and the mental health and well-being of our kids. Thank you.
Cory Gallimore.
My name is Cory Gallimore. The previous email I personally sent and thorough letter I signed described my concerns with the current school bond proposal plan. I am here to ask that you, the school board, a group of people who understand the unique community of Chapel Hill and Carrboro, people who live here, who have children in schools here, and some who have graduated from school in this district, request that the district administration provide multiple viable alternate plans to spend for $300 million bond. I ask that these plans be communicated to the entire community on June 20th at your board meeting. I ask that on June 20th, you also provide your plan to actively engage the Chapel Hill Town Council, Carrboro Town Council, and your key stakeholders, including the families of schools in the district, teachers, staff, and school administration. This community truly wants to support a school bond and understands the need. But without community input, the plan will fail.
Karen Crozier.
Hello. I don't want to repeat stuff that's been said or that will be said, I'm sure, went over. I just want to pick at a really specific puzzle piece from what we've, I'm also part of the McDougal PTA, and we've been talking to lots of people and looking at lots of documents. And we've kind of puzzled out that there used to be just a Plan C in what's called the Long Range Facilities Optimization Plan. It's referred to as Plan C. That was the original plan that was presented. And then after that, and that did not include the consolidation of the dual-language program or displacing McDougal. And after that, then those two pieces were added in. And we've really been looking for information about what the original plan looked like before that those pieces were added in. And especially in terms of how schools were going to be replaced without that official swing space. And we've not been able to find that information. I think we have some people working on requesting public records and such. But I think that will be helpful for us to look at and for you to look at too, to inform a potential alternative. Thank you for listening.
Amber Dutton. Hanlon.
Hello. How are you tonight? Wonderful. Good. Here I am. Okay. So, many wonderful things will be said tonight by this amazing and thoughtful community gathered all around in this room, and I'm adding my voice to this. Walk zones for schools are great. They have previously been cited as a priority for our district. They provide things like fresh air, exercise, less traffic, less need for buses, and they offer things like more birdsong, more sunshine, more embodiment and mental and physical health for our students and families overall. I would like to prioritize the walk zones we have and seek to add more walk zones as we plan for the future. Additionally, I'm a teacher. I work with groups of people to accomplish a common goal every day. We need to involve the community in this process and plan. You can see all over that we have an involved community that cares deeply about these things. We live in an amazing town. Let's work together. Let's use resources wisely. We're all working on these same projects that involve sustainability. And we also need to involve the teachers in our plans. The beauty of what a great teacher adds to their students' lives is of immeasurable value. And I would like this to be a district where inspiring and highly committed teachers continue to want to work, where employment experiences match the value we feel they offer to our children and communities. We are losing teachers overall in public school sectors. So, I'm asking that we prioritize walk zones and involve the community sooner rather than later. And please involve teachers as a resource that is far more valuable than buildings in the planning moving forward. Thank you.
Hi, y'all. I'm Natalie. I have a student at MES and MMS, and I've just completed my two-year sit term at MES as the parent coach here. I'm trained and eager to be a Blue Ribbon Mentor Scholar, scholar mentor this fall. I'm asking you all tonight to do two things. On behalf of parents and caregivers who actively engage in the betterment of our schools collaboratively with our beloved teachers and staff who are hanging out over there. Please, number one, please ask the district to work with staff, teachers, caregivers, and workshop sessions to come up with a handful of viable alternative proposals that minimize disruption of all district families and teachers. And number two, please ask the district to evaluate each viable alternative proposal with data against the key priorities of the strategic plan that are all around this room to gain your approval. I'm picturing some kind of scorecard format shared broadly and transparently to the community before the November election. If you want me to vote yes, and I really want to, I need to see alternatives laid out against equity, wellness, instructional excellence, et cetera. Thank you.
Randall Juris.
Hi. My name is Randall Juris. I'm a McDougal parent. I want to start off by saying that I wholeheartedly support higher funding for our schools. A big part of the reason my family moved here was because we wanted to live in a community that values and supports its public schools. But another equally big reason we moved here to our community, and I think this is true of a lot of McDougal families, was because we wanted to live in a walkable, bikeable community. Walking to school in the morning with friends has a wide array of well-documented benefits. It improves kids' health, their capacity to learn, and their independence and decision-making skills, not to mention supports our community's climate action goals. The current plan to move these kids to a new school on the outskirts of town, one that would require significantly more driving and busing, means that my vote for increased school funding would be a vote against one of my community's core values, which is a lot to ask. I ask you to please commit to producing alternatives to this plan before the bond goes up for a vote. For example, consider Morris Grove or Sewell for housing the dual-language program, since that program draws kids from all across town. Thank you very much.
Mike Zeng.
Good evening. My name is Mike, Mike John. I've been in Chapel Hill for eight years. My daughter is in 5th grade in Glenwood, and my daughter and my son in the 7th grade at Phillips. So, first of all, I don't think it's a good idea to adopt this four-by-four block schedule. So, while, you know, it might save some resource, but I believe it would significantly compromise the quality of our education. And as we know, doing the right thing is always more important than doing the things right. So, for example, this four-by-four block schedule will extend its class time to 90 minutes. I don't think I can even sit there for an hour and a half. So, as we know, high-quality public education is a key differentiator of Chapel Hill. This was a major reason why we chose to live in Chapel Hill when we moved to North Carolina eight years ago. I believe we need to make continuous improvement with Chapel Hill's public education rather than undermining the strength. In summary, I strongly oppose the adoption of the four-by-four block schedule. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katrina DeGindi. I have two boys at Smith Middle School, and I've been in the district for eight years. Thanks for allowing me to speak. We're all aware of the shortage of teachers in our school district. Teachers are planning on retiring if the four-by-four passes. In Culbrough, math classes have spent more than half a year without a math teacher. And in 5th grade, my student had a teacher for the entire year. At the same time, virtual public school options are being restricted or removed in our districts. When there's been no teacher, we've seen only a single solution proposed: find a teacher. But in the interim, students are not learning for months at a time. We know there will be teacher vacancies in August, and we know they are unlikely to be filled as the year progresses. There's no district policy or protocol for schools to follow for these teacherless classes to keep the students on track, and there has been substantial learning loss. This is the time for creative solutions. Virtual learning, out-of-scope teachers, increased parent engagements, those are just a few options. But we need a firm district plan and policy to prevent students from losing months of instructions. Our teacher shortage is not improving, and the move to a four-by-four will worsen this. Please make policy and planning for teacherless classes a top priority so that all students can start school in August and receive the education they deserve.
Monica Strada.
Hi. My name is Monica Strada, and I'm a parent of two students at Carrboro High School. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider delaying your vote on a four-by-four semester block schedule. I have two big concerns. The first concern is that there is a lack of evidence to support the claim that a four-by-four semester block schedule will improve learning for struggling students and will work to close the achievement gap. Four-by-four semester block is not new. It's not innovative. It's been around for a long time. So, I encourage the board to ask the district to pull data from other school districts, show us that test scores improve. So, that's my first concern. My second concern is that I'm very frustrated that Carrboro High School's schedule has not been considered as a model for all high schools in this district. Carrboro High School has been operating on a modified four-by-four A B block schedule since the 2021-2022 school year. It's been able to implement a flex block that helps support struggling students. In the construction of this schedule, our school was able to build consensus. So, again, I ask you to delay your vote and ask for more information. Thank you.
Hannah Strada.
Dear board, my name is Hannah Strada, and I'm a rising sophomore at Carrboro High School. I'm against the four-by-four block schedule for a couple reasons. The first being, I'm a student that wants to be challenged academically. One way to do this is by taking AP classes, which would be more difficult to prepare for with this schedule. I would either have three months off before taking the exam or have six weeks less to learn necessary content. Another reason I'm against the schedule is because a 35-minute flex time will not help me or my peers be productive or get the help that we need. With the A B schedule at Carrboro, we have a flex time that supports students and gives them time to meet with clubs and get work done. We can also take APs and CTEs, which from my understanding would lose by name with the four-by-four block. I hope you choose to consider this before you vote.
Deanna Vecchia. She's right outside the door.
Hello. I'm Deanna Vecchia, and as a teacher at McDougal, I'm extremely concerned about the bond plan that would turn our campus into a dual-language campus and disperse the students and staff around the district. While I completely support improved facilities, I do not feel like moving all these students around is the correct answer. We have worked extremely hard to build a positive and strong community at McDougal, and tearing that apart would be detrimental. Students benefit from being able to walk and bike to school as well as to go to school in a strong community close to home. Teachers have built strong connections to support our learners at our school. We have an amazing administration and team of dedicated educators. Please consider alternative plans to maintain the schools we have worked hard to build. I don't want to be torn out of a place that I have truly come to love and thrive in. Thank you.
Laura Sansino.
Hello. As a teacher at McDougal Elementary School, I am very concerned about the way the news came to light to us, which was through a slide. It kind of felt like it was swept under the rug because we didn't even get a say in it. It makes me question the intentionality behind this bond. A lot of our students walk and bike to school. Are we going to further their distance and make them also ride the bus? Our bus system is broken. We already have a bus shortage. A lot of my students have been late to school many times due to the bus issues. Are we going to create a bigger absence issue in our county? Teacher shortage is also a problem. CHCCS is one of the best school systems in the state. Are you aware that there is already talk about teachers leaving due to not being sure what our future will hold? It feels like, as teachers, students, and the community, we are being put on the back burner like we don't matter. This money could be used differently. McDougal is bigger than just a school. Please do not break something that's not broken. Please don't break something that is thriving. Please protect our schools, and please protect our kids' mental health. Thank you.
I am from McDougal. My name is Katie Rankin. Good evening, and thank you. I'd like to preface my statement by saying that I clocked out of work an hour early to make it to this meeting. That's an hour of pay that I've lost. But thankfully, my family is able to absorb that. Not all families have that luxury, and that is why school community is so important. I have two kids in our schools, and I want them and all children to learn in a safe building. But a school is more than just the sum of its buildings. Established teams of dedicated staff are vitally important in creating a supportive school environment. And many of our staff aren't going to stick around to find out if they're redundant in the current bond plan. Our children don't need shiny new schools to learn in as much as they need teachers who care for them, who know their families, and a school community that supports them. I'm not convinced that disrupting established school communities and teams of staff across the district is necessary to improve our school facilities. As much as I would happily agree to higher taxes to get more money for our teachers and staff and more money for repairs of aging buildings, I will not be able to support the bond in this current format. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Krista Abetti. I'm a parent at McDougal Elementary, and I'm just gonna read really fast. I have a specific question for the board that a lot of us want to know and that I hope gets answered. Since this proposed plan violates the current walk zone policy, will the board have a vote to change the walk zone policy? Does this mean that the district will no longer have a walk zone policy for any school? I'd also like to center equity in this discussion. I'd like us to ask complex, challenging questions. Let's pay attention to the percentage of students with disabilities that are served at McDougal versus our three dual-language magnet programs. Let's ask what message is being sent when a district completely dismantles a Title I school led by a respected and adored Black principal and prioritizes special programs that are de facto inaccessible to many of our students. And let's ask why we are building a new middle school first instead of renovating the schools that really need renovations. The only reason we need a new middle school right now is because the plan wants to displace McDougal middle school students. It's a solution to an unnecessary problem that was invented by a bad plan.
Hi, thank you. We are thankful for a bond that addresses our aging school facilities, but we would like to share some significant concerns from the Estes Hills community. It is hard for us to understand why Estes Hills has been selected for consolidation and not for renovation. Our need for renovation is clear. Estes Hills opened in 1958. This is not the first facilities assessment that has found Estes Hills significantly lacking. In addition to structural deficiencies, previous assessments have considered school safety and is glaringly absent from the campus. Now that the district is finally planning a large-scale investment in facilities, we are once again being asked to wait, wait at least ten more years, not because we lack need, but because our site could be valuable and helping to rebuild another school years from now. We would like you to address it soon. It's hard to believe that the next round of funding would prioritize Estes Hills. Thank you.
Susan Wolf. Susan Wolf. Mary Lobo.
My name is Mary Lobo, and I'm here because I oppose the change to the four-by-four block schedule. It's been said this is a step towards closing the opportunity gap, but I did a lot of research, and there is no evidence that a schedule change of any kind can close the opportunity gap. And the problems with the four-by-four are plentiful. It would have been better to adopt the Carrows plan, which could fulfill the equity needs, without the problems of the semester-based four-by-four. My husband went to Charlottesville High School, which was on the Carrow plan, and managed to get a degree in plumbing and electrical from his community college there under that plan. Studies show that schools that have closed the gap increase instruction time and prioritize strong teacher relationships, and the semester-based plan doesn't do that. The administration claims we can resolve the problems later, but that's like asking you to jump out of a plane with all the parts to make a parachute and trust that you'll be able to put it together and deploy it before you hit the ground. I wouldn't jump out of that plane. The details matter for this and for the bond proposal, and it doesn't help to do things differently if what we're doing isn't better. The four-by-four is not better, so please vote no.
Couldn't hear in there, I'm sorry. Hi, I am asking you to say no to the proposed four-by-four schedule. I have a Chapel Hill High School student. If you instead go with the top-ranked schedule, the combination A/B four-by-four block with daily flex, that should give students the ability to participate in dual enrollment and protect the mandated CTE hours and maintain consistency, more consistency, or at least allow for more consistency across classes like math, languages, music. I'm concerned about the impacts to AP classes. The A/B four-by-four convo ranks ten percent higher than the four-by-four proposal in front of you, and I would just ask that if you vote for the four-by-four, to please consider all the various flexibility that you absolutely can work into it so that the children are better served by the new plan.
Anne Grozey.
Good evening, board members. The closing of Estes Hills would mean much more than the loss of a building. It would signify the erosion of our neighborhood's heart. We've had four kids go through Estes, and they've had wonderful experiences of walking and riding their bikes to school. For us and many others, the neighborhood and playground are the foundation of the neighborhood. The bond proposal should include funds to update Estes Hills, just like the last bond proposal, and not close it. Closure will force neighborhood children to travel further, fragmenting our community and straining family routines, particularly when bus transportation is so unreliable. If the district truly appreciates the value of walkable schools, then closing Estes Hills is an incredibly short-sighted decision. I hope you will reconsider, because I will not be voting for the bond with the current proposal. Thank you very much.
Rachel Klein.
Thank you for being here tonight. I've worked for six years at the McDougals, first as a seventh-grade EC resource teacher and now as a third-grade teacher. With the current bond, some of the schools with the strongest communities in the district will be dissolved. I consider myself lucky to teach at one of these schools with a team of wonderful people. As you'll hear with our working condition survey, our staff truly enjoys working at McDougal and for our administrators. There's a high likelihood my third-grade teammates and I will no longer be able to continue to work together according to this plan. Just like in other workplaces, the output of educators is only as successful as the group working together collaboratively and based on our collective dedication to the community. Additionally, it's going to be nearly impossible to hire high-quality, equity-focused teachers when you're unsure of your school's future. Current teachers will leave before transitions are even set out by the bond because of the uncertainty of their jobs. I urge you to look at alternatives, make adjustments, and please prioritize equity. Thank you.
Nora.
Hi, I'm Nora Reddigan. Two weeks ago, I created a survey for the freshman and sophomore classes at East regarding the four-by-four block schedule. The survey had an overwhelming response, and out of the 211 students that chose to fill it out, 188 responded no to the question, "Are you in favor of the proposed four-by-four block schedule?" I've already emailed you all the spreadsheet with all the data, and me and my friend Evelyn would like to read some of the comments that real students in our district wrote. Just in purpose, I'm only here to give voice to the students who respond to this survey, and it's not a reflection of my personal beliefs on this schedule. Our class schedules are already on repeat with the same seven classes in the exact same order every day. Students lose focus even in the fifty-five-minute classes that we currently have and are only really able to fully focus for forty to forty-five minutes, extending class time to more than an hour, mentally and physically draining. We will be chipped out of hundreds of minutes of instruction time, which can put us at an unfair disadvantage when applying to universities. This will also destroy the honor of the arts programs of every single school in this district, as there will be significantly less enrollment in arts courses such as band orchestral plays and other for the four-by-four. As someone who has stepsiblings who attend Jordan High School, we currently use a four-by-four response versus comments, if you guys don't remember.
Evelyn Steinbeck.
Hello, my name is Evelyn Steinbeck. Once again, I'm just going to continue rattling off the responses to Nora's survey. I'll get there as many as I can in the time that you allow me. Thank you very much. The four-by-four block schedule would hurt teachers and make their jobs even harder than they already are. They're the most important thing in our school, and we couldn't have learned without them. They deserve to be treated better, and I think they would be better off with the standard seven-period schedule. We would see our teachers thirty whole hours less. This is not enough time to prepare for exams. I would be so scared for exams, especially if I take an AP exam the first semester and the test won't be for months. Our precious arts program, which is still recovering from COVID, would be devastated. This is also an equity issue. Only the kids who can get private tutors would be able to go into arts or music. I took a semester language class freshman year, and it almost destroyed me. My mother refused to let me take the next level the following semester due to how much I struggled with it. The more class time is false, and we are losing the thirty hours that I need. You are asking us to assume the struggle of putting a year curriculum into a semester and try to pass with A's to go to college.
So I'm here to address two audiences, and I only have thirty seconds each, so I'll make it really short. To those on the school board who I have elected, as well as our great city, thank you for being here. I'm the parent of two kindergarten visits Estes Hills, they walk to school, and I am for investments in our public school. However, you have admitted in closed-door sessions that you did not have enough time to review the plan, and that the way we found out about the details of the plan was a botched PR plan. Please ask the hard questions that for some reason are not being answered. Delay the vote in November and engage us in a new plan, and you'll have my vote. Right now, you don't. To those of you who have moved here from Virginia in the past years and who I did not vote for, I'm not only a busy parent who has spent hours having to educate myself on your plan that was rolled out too quickly, I'm an economist, I have an MBA, and I run a successful business, so I'll try to speak to you in the dollar terms you might understand and actually listen to. This is a bad economic deal for the city, its business owners, its taxpayers, and will absolutely result in a decline in city revenues. I don't know your motives, but I do know that you, like Will, do not know Chapel Hill, our school system, nor how fiercely we will fight to save our neighborhood schools, communities, culture, despite whatever ROI you think it will bring to our city.
Hello, I'm William McCall. I have two infant children that will attend Estes Elementary. I second everything already said about the need for the bond to renovate and repair our schools and all the negative impacts to our students. However, my comments, I want to highlight one of the underlying issues why the response to this plan is so strong. Chapel Hill and Carrow have a relatively limited business sector. Indeed, that's why we need this bond. The tax base is too small. There's no manufacturing here, there's no industry, there's no finance sector. What we do have is an excellent university, fantastic hospital system, and a world-class public education system. This plan calls for shutting down schools. Shutting down schools is an attack on the school system. An attack on the school system is an attack on the talent of Chapel Hill. I encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
Erin Jackson.
I'm the parent of a second grader and rising kindergartner at Estes, and I want to echo calls for alternative plans. Our kids deserve safe, modern facilities, but they also deserve the community of extraordinary teachers, support staff, and principals that would be shattered by the current bond proposal. Please explore creative options for renovating facilities without displacing hundreds of students and depending on catastrophically understaffed bus networks. Rather than take under-enrolled schools offline, please preserve vital established school communities and expand zones to include more students from increasingly dense surrounding areas. And please, consult teachers, staff, and parents in addition to facilities-focused outside consultants.
Laura Ollie.
Hey, I have a posse up front at this door if they come in. Hey, we do all represent. Hi, good evening, members of the board. Dr. Hamlet and Holly, my name's Laura Ollie. I'm a school social worker at McDougal Elementary. I'm also the parent of a middle schooler at McDougal Middle. And related to the Orange County bond and district restructuring plan, why would we implement a plan that hasn't been put through racial equity assessments or traffic and busing assessments? This plan would exacerbate issues related to racial equity and chronic absenteeism, as more kids would need to be bused into school, bused farther, have to get up even earlier, which means more kids missing the bus, and more parents who don't have alternative transportation to get their kids to school. Furthermore, specific to McDougal Elementary, we have one of the strongest school communities in the district and even in the state of North Carolina. Our teacher working condition survey well surpasses other schools in our district and in North Carolina for teacher satisfaction. The nine questions related to staff retention all surpassed the district and state averages. For being a great place to work, CNL McDougal Elementary was nineteen percent above the district average, fifteen percent above the state average. One hundred percent of our staff completed this survey. Sixty-four percent of our staff strongly agree that our school leadership creates a climate of trust. This is thirty-six percent higher than the district average, thirty percent higher than the state. We need to foster this in all our schools, not dismantle it where it's working. Thank you.
Dear members of the board, hello, my name is Evan. I'm here once again to strongly oppose the implementation of the four-by-four block schedule and question the motives and integrity of the board members so eager to push this vote through. Since the last meeting, I will admit I was genuinely surprised to see this issue as being one of race and equity. And after I tried to understand if there was something in the picture I was missing, the more I looked into it, the less it made sense. The ultimate reasons for recommendation in the report don't focus on the achievement or opportunity gap, and far more detailed studies have shown that no schedule alone is more or less equitable, and instead equity relies more on specific measures taken with any schedule that addresses it. Even district and school leadership I've spoken to have admitted that equity was not a focus of the schedule change. It's a little concerning, then, that a majority of the board members who support this change supported for the sole purpose to address inequity in the school district. It creates a false sense of hope around the issue and is a disservice to everyone. Additionally, if the other supposed benefits of the change really are effective, why doesn't the public think so? If this really won't destroy the arts, language, and music, and it really won't be a teacher pay cut, and it really will do stress, then why don't people think so? Consensus is the key to implementing change that people will work with and be happy with, and it's also the key to reelection or higher political office that I'm sure many of the members of the board look forward to in the future. I urge the members to seriously consider why they're voting this through and to reconsider the pass-it-now, fix-it-later mentality I've seen on the board and with district leadership. And I'm sure this also applies to the many comments about the bond proposals I've heard tonight as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meredith Neese. I'm the parent of a kindergartner in the Estes Hills community and also a three-year-old. I want to start just by specifically highlighting that Estes Hills has a highly effective and loved principal in Miss McCann, and as a result, has a low teacher turnover and a very happy and frankly kind of low-maintenance parent community thus far. This educational community has taken years to build, and this reality is an example of what people have already talked about extensively tonight, that the heart of a school can't be measured and depicted just by graphs and models, but this heart must be considered in a plan that reshuffles all of our schools and closes multiple of them down. In a public education founded community like Chapel Hill, the home of our flagship state university, our schools are our heart, as we've heard. Major changes like the school bond affect every level of our town: housing, transportation, environment, employment, more. Other town departments and existing identified town priorities must be taken into account when we are planning and making large plans like this, as opposed to just facilities and facilities-based finances. Those things are extremely important. However, please consider the complete community plan that we voted on and essentially mandated in this last election and how this fits into that larger plan. Thank you.
Akshay Pindya.
Good evening. I am the parent of an Estes Hills elementary school student. I'm a resident of the Estes Hills neighborhood. I'm also the proud alum of the Chapel Hill-Carrow City School System. Wolpert, the outside consultancy, did what I have no doubt was an able and competent job, but they necessarily adopted the view of the outsider, couched in the purportedly universal language of numbers. You know what I'm talking about: utility, cost-benefit, and the like. But I guarantee you, if you made the data available, the quote-unquote "raw" numbers, I have no doubt that I, and I would venture to say many in this room, could construct a finely tuned statistical model whose outputs would support any preconceived conclusion or belief. Seriously, I do it all the time in my day job. This approach, which is so in vogue at all levels of government, and I understand why because of its ostensible neutrality, ignores what might be called local knowledge, which I think is exactly what you've seen on display here: the shared folkways, the cohesion that can only arise in the orbit of a so-called anchor institution: hospitals, universities, and, yes, public schools. So I strongly urge the board to reconsider this redistricting program, to euphemistically quote-unquote "take Estes Hills offline." Thank you.
Hello, I am a rising senior at Chapel Hill High School, and I'm here to talk about the block schedule. So the block schedule proposed, it's either seven periods in a flex schedule or eight periods in a flex schedule. Either way, class time is reduced, and with less class time, teachers can cover less content. So if either the course gets crammed down so that kids don't have a depth of knowledge, they learn all the topics really shallowly, or less content, like just content is cut out, it might seem like more kids are passing more courses because they're able to take eight courses each year instead of seven, but it will not actually equate to more knowledge gained, and it will not prepare them for college or any other job that you might pursue after high school. In addition, this block In addition, this block proposal will be implemented, it seems like there is not enough of a format for teachers to, there's not enough guidance for teachers to switch from their current teaching methods to the new method, and when it's implemented this soon, they will not be able to switch this fast, and quality of teaching will reduce a lot, and it'll drastically negatively impact those who are gonna live with this block schedule as their school schedule. So, please vote against it today. Thank you very much.
Brianna, please.
I'm a current freshman at Chapel Hill High, and I'd like to address something more specific that hasn't really been mentioned much, which is the push for students to co-enroll in local community colleges such as Durham Tech, as evident by trying to better match their schedule with ours, but there's a greater barrier to entry that AP courses don't have. Transportation is not provided, so students are left to find ways to commute by themselves. Registration is difficult considering you must be a rising junior to even apply, and it's a multi-step process that requires numerous forms outside of the usual application to register for classes. It'll cause more division among the student body as my peers will be further removed from the campus, their teachers, and their friends. I fear this may inadvertently fracture the bonds of our community. If students are encouraged to pursue this avenue, we must be given the adequate resources to do so. The district must focus on fixing current issues rather than trialing formulas that often don't work, especially in the long run. I implore you to please reconsider alternatives and vote against the four-by-four block schedule.
Tracy, please. Good evening. This is Tracy. My family appreciates your dedication to our schools. We have written many times to the board of our concerns. We have also drafted a combo AB schedule for your reference. I hope you have read emails and the draft. The draft of the combo AB block schedule will help every single student in our community. That means all students, including average, AP, career pathway, CTE, and math students. It also provides flexibility for arts and athletics students and attention deficit students. In summary, with all the core subjects alternate on AB day, while arts and the word language occupy a longer block together but expanding every weekday, this schedule gives all the freedom and flexibility to our talented and passionate students to navigate. This schedule also meet the goal from the administration by lowering course loads, supporting course-home-life balance, providing comprehensive academic support, developing robust on-ramp, encouraging course enrollment, supporting newcomers, and supporting new academic pathways. We recommend you do not adopt the four-by-four, but rather consider combo AB in our high schools. Thank you.
Relative to an earlier comment, Keith Cooper, statistics calculus teacher and tireless student government advisor, is an exceptional human being and teacher and would be an extraordinary loss to our entire district, so please note that. The most unfortunate part of what did turn out to be a march to four-by-four block is this: somehow the complexities of the schedule change have been reduced to an exceedingly false narrative. This is the narrative: if you are for a four-by-four block, you are in favor of helping Black and Brown students; if you are against four-by-four block, or if you care about what happens to kids who take AP classes, you are not. Let me say this again as strongly as I can: this is a false narrative. I ask you not to vote on the basis of a false narrative. There are real questions unanswered here. Give yourselves time, please, to answer them. No one's even mentioned that for many classes, it takes two or three Durham Tech classes to equal one high school requirement. It takes three English Durham Tech classes to equal English III. Do we know that? We haven't talked about it. The schedule change is supposed to close the opportunity gap. It will not. It will not. We know how to close the opportunity gap, and when we are ready to raise resources, to start early with head start and provide subsistence academic support, I am all-in on raising resources for that. We know how to do it.
Thank you.
That was not 60 seconds. I timed this very carefully, and that was a little short. Switching from the schedule will not close the gap. It will decrease the experience for all students while increasing teacher workload and effectively decreasing salary. Barbara said 500 teachers were opposed. She stopped counting at 500. Why are we still considering this with thousands of people on a petition and with teachers, 500 teachers?
Thank you.
Got it. If you have not made your gift of project graduation or signed up to volunteer, please do that.
Thank you.
Marcie Waters. Hello, I'm here to talk about the four-by-four block schedule, and really with two points: data and teachers. So I am a UNC chemistry professor who has implemented large-scale change in our pre-med program, which has impacted over 1,000 students each year. So I know how difficult large change is, which is what this four-by-four would be, and I know that it really needs to be like no other solution. My husband is also a 20-year veteran of the district, teaching in middle school, and I have two kids in the district. So, number one, data. I have not seen any data showing how the four-by-four block schedule actually improves student outcomes. In fact, I've found data on your website that shows that our district across all demographics does better than all the surrounding districts that are on four-by-four block schedules. So the data isn't there. The data isn't also there. I haven't seen evidence that partnering with community colleges has had large-scale benefits. This is not a new thing. Block scheduling has been going on for 20 years, but there's not data. Also, teachers are at their wits' end. I just learned yesterday that six out of the eight eighth-grade teachers at Colbreath are leaving at the end of the year. Six out of eight.
Thank you.
That you should not be making large-scale change when teachers are fleeing.
Nisha Singh.
Thank you for conducting this meeting tonight. My name is Nisha Singh, and I'm a freshman at Chapel Hill High School. I was present at the last two meetings that discussed the block schedule, and I'm here tonight to reshare my points as to why today's vote should be against the block schedule. The proposed schedule will negatively impact AP classes, creating learning gaps and potential knowledge loss, depending on which semester the course is in. Language and art programs require consistent practice throughout the school year, and a one-semester gap in academic years can negatively impact students' learning by causing stress, limiting time for proper skill development, and hindering continuity, leading to decreased enrollment and hindering skill development. Block schedules can be overwhelming, stressful, and disrupt course continuity, and they limit student focus, strain teachers, and can lead to decreased engagement and increase teacher burnout affecting both students and teachers. Please show that you value the countless voices of students, teachers, and parents by voting against the block schedule. Thank you for your time.
Andrew Dunn.
Hi, everyone. I'm Andrew Dunn. I'm a Hispanic student at Chapel Hill High and a leader in my school's student government. I plead with you to reject the proposal for the four-by-four schedule, block schedule, whether it be to have more time for a fuller investigation to be conducted or for you to accept the fact that there's just too many people in this district opposing the proposal. This investigation seems to me an overblown waste of resources, resources which could be better invested into more tangible issues plaguing our schools. If you have ever stepped into one of our schools on a normal day, you can expect to see at least a dozen kids roaming the hall. For months, there were bathrooms in our school that didn't have doors. Chronic skipping, grade inflation, while money has been blown on flying people in from Texas to report biased statistics and push agendas, students have had more pressing issues. Is this proposal really the best use of our time, money, and other resources? As they teach us in school, I advise the board to not fall into fallacious thinking. When making the decision, do not fall into a sunk-cost fallacy and think, "We spent so long already investigating this, we should approve it already." Look solely at the quality of the investigation and its public support or lack thereof. Multiple petitions on change.org quickly approved, over 500 signatures each, and that's just those who stumbled across the petition. We have made it abundantly clear we do not support this proposal, and there are other ways to address groups in need without hindering students taking art, music, language, or math classes, which encompasses just about everyone. You all have been patient enough following this investigation since, I believe, September, so wait some more time to either look into ways to address the concerns that the public has brought forth or reject the proposal now and look into alternatives. We can agree that action is indeed needed, but that is not an excuse to run blindly into a dark room hoping to find, to figure it out along the way. All teachers that I've spoken to and that I've had the privilege to speak to have voiced their concerns with it. The CTE teachers are concerned about having too little time, and there's too much confusion among the general public. I think having some more time to delve over the specifics of the investigation may get more people on board, but until then, I think it's irresponsible to go along with the four-by-four block schedule. Thank you.
Mr. Yang.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, my name is Yonggah. Good to see you. Okay. I'm a parent of East Chapel High student. At the same time, I was a senior, bestest teacher. So here I have to point out, you know, the survey for four-by-four block is biased. What's a bias? Bias is a systemic error when the statistical did not accurately present a population. So, the survey is not presenting a demographic of a high school. You know, in high school, let's just give you an example, the black is 70%, 10% black, but in the survey is 45.9%. The white is, the student is 79.3%, but in the survey, the white only 17.1%. Yes, so this is not, you know, unfair sampling. So this unfair sampling caused bias. Only, only conclusion was biased. The bias is not liable. Please reconsider this four-by-four block. Thanks so much.
Hi, I'm Qiyang, a parent of a rising ninth grader. I want to specifically point out again that four-by-four block schedule was not the top choice based on the current procedure. Our Chicago E.D. consultant admitted in last meeting that there are opportunities to incorporate other block schedules like combo AB, which may help mitigate some of the risks. However, the main reason these were not incorporated was because it might be too complicated to implement. As Dr. Greenfield pointed out, the board have already invested significantly on this project for many years. This is exactly the reason why you should not settle for a suboptimal proposal when you know a better alternative may exist. In addition, while it's impossible to satisfy everyone, a solution lacking majority support, especially from our teachers, is unlikely to succeed. I urge you to continue listening to community's concerns and address them. These inputs should not be dismissed as mere noise or obstacles, but as essential contributions towards achieving our common goal.
One more thing.
Good evening, dear board members. My name is Yen Wuzhen. I'm a mom of a rising ninth grader. I have lived in Chapel Hill for 20 years. I'm here to express my concerns about the four-by-four schedule regarding the flexible time use. As the mom of the teenager, as the parent of the teenager, are we confident that the teenager can effectively use the flexible time to advance their learning without guidance or supervision? No. So without the structured instruction or guidance from teachers, are the students, are the teenagers at risk of misusing the flexible time, leading to a waste of the instructional time and the resources? Yes. So I advise you to reconsider the four-by-four schedule. Thank you.
Emily Ray.
Good evening. My name is Haley. I'm an exceptional children's teacher assistant at McDougal Elementary and a UNC student studying to become a teacher. In my studies, I have learned that transitions are difficult for children. The proposed plan for the bond would create a great amount of transition for both students and staff. Students would have to leave their walkable schools, coworkers of mine would be let go, communities would be separated, and mental health would be hurt. As the parent of a future CHCCS student, I do not want my own child to have to go through this. Additionally, McDougal is an impractical place for a magnet school. FPG was specifically chosen due to its central location. In the development of this bond, there is a lack of consultation of city officials, school staff, and families. With millions of dollars on the line and thousands of lives being affected, we need to reevaluate this plan as a community. Thank you.
Carrie Hammel.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Hammel, and I'd like to further lift up a remark made by a community neighbor about teacherless students and where we are with that. I ask that before the board votes on any of the matters on the discussion and action, as well as the update on the voted debt and the non-voted debt, that there be a report by the district of how many students over the past three years and in what variations have gone without wonderful permanent teachers and for what period of time. I also ask that written public comment be, that embargo be lifted and written public comment at this very important and crucial time in this school district's history so that neighbors and you, we can all be on the same page. As I have expressed in my prior written remarks and here at the podium, which I don't like to do, it is my deep belief that Chapel Hill-Carver does not have adequate internal controls and tangible practice to reasonably protect taxpayers from waste, fraud, mistakenness, management. I ask that you no longer refer to the bond as 300 million, but the actual amount, and what's the non-voted debt and what's the voted debt. Thank you very much.
Emily Ray.
Good evening. My name is Emily Ray, and I'm here to raise concerns about the school bond proposal, particularly the proposed closure of Estes Hills Elementary. I understand the need for additional funds. My concerns stem from a poorly conceived plan about how to utilize those funds. The communication regarding this proposal from district administration has been unacceptably poor, and our community invites and deserves closer engagement as the process moves forward. I'm specifically concerned about plans to close Estes Hills Elementary, a vibrant, well-run school. While enrollment is currently low, there's projected growth in this area as new families move in to establish homes and new housing is added through the town's plans to densify housing along the MLK corridor. Closing a school now that is expected to be needed again in 10 years is poorly conceived. I'm concerned about disruption of walk zones. Estes Hills has many students who walk or bike. Increasing reliance on an already strained bus system or private vehicles only contributes to traffic and detracts from well-being from all members of our community. I strongly ask you to reconsider the plans to close Estes Hills and consider a renovation in place or temporary relocation while enrollment is temporarily low. Thank you.
One more thing.
I talked with my 15 colleagues. Three of them experienced the four-by-four schedule in their elementary school. One got four-by-four in their middle school. None of them met four-by-four in the high school. You think that makes sense? Some young kids' family like this more flexible schedule. It's good for family event and vacation, but for teenager family, it might, it might be not good. We can imagine how hard for a high school student to find a job only for two or three weeks. They barely have student activities or sports camp opened for four-by-four students. Four-by-four schedule will make more difficulties for teenager families. Please consider that. Thank you.
Good evening, dear board members. My name is Ping Chen, a parent, a parent of two high schools in the district. I have voiced here two times already and signed petition letters and written a number of emails to the board, providing a long list of reasons for why the board should vote against the block schedule. against the block schedule. I don't have time to list all here again, but I would like just to draw your attention. Up till yesterday, the petition letters have gathered two thousand signatures pleading the board to vote against the block schedule. Two thousand is a big number, and it indicates that the four-by-four block schedule will not serve the needs of many students in this district. Please seriously consider the needs of the, this big number of two thousand opposing voices from students, parents, and the community members and vote against the proposed four-by-four schedule. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who didn't sign up and is here tonight that would like to speak? Is there anybody else waiting outside? Do we know that did not sign up and would like to speak? Let's check that real quick. Okay, I do want to thank everybody who came tonight to speak and also those of you who came to listen. That's going to conclude our public comments section, and we're going to move on to the first discussion and action item, which is going to be the recommendation for approval of the high school scheduling model. And then I anticipate after that, we'll take a five-minute break if that works for board members and staff.
So Dr. Trice, would you like to introduce, make some comments to us?
Sure. I don't have a presentation, but I would like to read some prepared comments with the board. Anticipating a decision tonight about the alignment of high school schedules, I want to assure the board, our staff, and community stakeholders that this will not represent the end of a process, but rather a continuation of engagement where collaboration across the district will become even more expansive. During our presentations, our various presentations, we outlined our motivation for change, as was mentioned a couple of times. We've studied student profiles, highlighted the benefits and risks associated with the various scheduling models, and outlined the administration's next steps after a decision is made. But I would like to take a moment to also publicly acknowledge a number of commitments that I think are important that the administration would like to make. In the event that the board adopts or decides tonight around high school scheduling, the administration is committed to development of a forward-facing implementation dashboard where the community can track, along with the administration, our progress. We're also committed to providing the board regular updates, at least quarterly, through our Student Success Committee concerning implementation, where you could get a more detailed view of the administration's work, to include what's going well and perhaps, you know, any challenges that we're experiencing as an administration. I think it's important to acknowledge also the continuous engagement of various groups of our staff members to help craft decisions related to content-specific questions over the next fourteen months for successful implementation, and also maintaining a structure such as the guiding committee to continue to work with the administration for implementation. But more specifically, some of the next steps that we've highlighted in our previous presentations, begin to revise our curriculum guides if the board does decide tonight. Level-setting on the type of flexibility that is available in the four-by-four model. Again, engaging staffs such as music teachers, world language teachers, is going to be very important to our work to not only talk about implementation, but growth of those programs. Develop common parameters around flex time. We heard from a number of parents, students, and teachers that there needs to be something, some parameters around flex time. And in consultation with our teachers, begin to outline professional development, not only for next year, but beyond. And we also committed in our last meeting to do community roundtables over the next year or so so that we can have additional conversations with our community members as we work to implement the high school schedule change. Lastly, Mr. Chair, I'd like to publicly thank our guiding committee, the many hours that they committed to this work, our staff, of course, our community, for their high level of engagement. And I know that this work, it made our work better. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to the board, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Trice. Board members, what I'm suggesting we do is I'm going to ask each of you if you'd like to take a minute or two to make a statement or to ask Dr. Trice some more questions. I think we have an understanding that we're not going to rehash everything we've spent the last several board meetings talking about. And Dr. Trice, if I could, I'd like to go first and start off with my explanation and appeal to my colleagues that I am going to support the district administration's recommendation to adopt the four-by-four block as it's in the resolution and you've asked for, beginning with school year 2025, which is roughly fourteen months from now. It was almost ten months ago when you came to us in August, on August seventeenth precisely, and that night, we approved the curriculum and instruction management plan. And as a part of that, we authorized you, the district administrators, to investigate the alignment of high school schedules and directed you to bring a recommendation to the board in the spring, which is now, which is what you have done, and I appreciate that. For me, this is a part of a larger effort to continue moving in the direction of becoming a genuine school system rather than merely a system of schools. This concept actually does get at the heart of equity, plain and simple. It's equity of opportunity for each and every student. Equity in this, and bear with me, equity in this situation means ensuring that every student in our district has the same opportunity to receive the best possible education regardless of school assignment, classroom or subject assignment, grade level, or teacher assignment. You know, I'll just be frank, we're not there yet with equity. And it's equity of opportunity for me when I talk about equity. There are some systemic inequities that we still need to address. A unified high school schedule, particularly the four-by-four block that we're talking about tonight, is really a small but very important part of moving toward more systemic changes to allow more opportunities for more students. It does not solve all of our issues, as many would hope, nor will it harm students as many fear. Yes, it's a change, and yes, it will require significant work in the year ahead and likely adjustments in the following years. This is a long-term process. During this timeframe, the past ten months, the administration, under your valued and capable leadership, Dr. Trice and with your team, Dr. Bales, you undertook a good faith and diligent effort to assess high school schedule models and possibilities, all with an eye on unifying the schedules among the schools and recommending one that you thought would benefit our students. Some have loudly criticized the process or the conclusions. Some have been supportive. I personally stayed as focused as I could on the assessment work done, the information in the final report, which is extremely extensive and broad-reaching, and your presentations over the past month or so as we got to your final recommendation. Now, I know our community is passionate about education. That's a good thing. It's part of what makes Chapel Hill and Carboro an amazing place to live. I also recognize that this is a major change for many folks, and with change comes doubt and often anxiety. I share some of those doubts and anxieties myself when we do something huge like this. So I'm going to conclude my comments to you tonight and just repeat that, you know, I plan to support the vote, the block when we take a vote later this evening, and I would urge my colleagues to do the same. And with that said, I'll give anybody else a chance to ask what they like or say what they like.
I also wrote up some comments. So at the last board meeting, I asked for time and specifically the three weeks until today's meeting because you had presented some new information and I wanted time to digest it. And in that time, I've reached out to parents, teachers, and administrators on all sides of this issue in our district, talked with people who live in other districts who have block schedules, talked with people who've grown up in other countries that were on block schedules. I've read every peer-reviewed report anybody has sent me and done my own research as well. I've met with you and Dr. Bales and Dr. Hamlet multiple times for several, several hours to follow up on the concerns that I've had, and I don't know this for sure, but I feel like I might be, have been the most reluctant to support this. And so I appreciate your willingness, as you just said, to, to regularly update us on the kind of what we've identified as some of the tricky points. So specifically, course continuity, especially in math, world languages, preservation of music, how we're going to handle A.P. challenges, the need to take steps to ensure that while we're solving one set of stress problems, we don't create another by having students load up on an additional A.P., making sure that Exceptional Children students are appropriately served, and ensuring that the flex time that we have is well-programmed. I do see this as, as a logical extension of the equity audit that we, we had of the curriculum and instruction audit that we have and the strategic plan, all of which touch on topics that this schedule addresses. And I really want to echo George's point that this is a tool. This is not going to get us there, and I agree that it's, would not be right to say that if you're against this, that you're against equity. I mean, that is, or that if you're for it, you're going to get equity because you're not. It's a step. It's an opportunity. And I, just a few other things. The status quo does not seem to be serving our students well, and I want to thank Ms. Jenkins for bringing this up at the last meeting and drawing our attention to the latest social-emotional survey results that we have from our high school students, which are really abysmal. And of course, it's like, it would be fallacious to say that it's because of the schedule, but I raise it just to say that there has been a little bit of a narrative in some of the emails we've gotten along the lines of if nothing is broken, why fix it? And I, and I think it is not the case that nothing is broken. Secondly, so just in terms of my thought process, it really does make sense to align schedules across our four high schools. It's a small district. Doing that allows for cross-enrollment. As we pointed out the last meeting, our economically disadvantaged students are way disproportionately concentrated at Carboro High and Phoenix Academy. They should be able to have access to Chapel Hill High and East Chapel Hill High's comparatively robust curricular offerings in all, in all areas. Block schedules, if well-implemented, allow for deeper exploration of ideas, Socratic seminars, science labs, group projects, more differentiation and support for students who cannot get homework help at home. And it's my understanding that school-dependent learners were meant to be the main focus of the guiding committee, and I see this schedule as focusing in a way overdue, like, it's been long overdue that we focus on, on those students. And just, I guess the last thing is that I see you as presenting a four-by-four, it's not a pure four-by-four, but that has some flexibility in it and that will allow for some courses to be taught year-long, and I know that's all to be hashed out, but I have a lot of confidence based on the meetings I've had with you and your presentations here that, that we can work this out. And so I am happy to say that I will support this change. Kivaro.
Sure. Let me try to gather my thoughts a little bit. I think I want to start with the comments that multiple people have had about CTE and that four-by-four would be detrimental to CTE. I would go to say that CTE in its current state is still looking to make sure that it's flourishing, but four-by-four is not going to be detrimental to it. And if you think that CTE is something that people aren't looking to try to push forward, I would definitely say that four-by-four is the exact opposite of that. Four-by-four is trying to, will also try to push the narrative of trying to have additional pathways for student success, to not make student success just look one-dimensional in our district, which for so long has happened when it comes to people that have stated things like the community colleges, it's not as many that would like to go. CTE is sort of the, I don't know, I would say a birth child of what used to be trade schools that have become community colleges, and some things go full circle. If you think about like our automotive program that's here in our district, it's absolutely wonderful. We had it years ago before the term CTE ever existed. We had horticulture prior to the term CTE ever existed. We had childcare things. We have now the partnerships between high school and public school districts and the community colleges. We have people that are going to community college and high school at the same time with these dual enrollment that by the time they get out, they're halfway to getting their nurses degrees. I mean, that's not just halfway to being a CNA. I'm saying halfway to getting your B.S.N. And then we're talking about people who are halfway to having their business management degrees. There are different ways to measure success. So I just say that to say that that's one thing that I want people not to kind of balance on. And then another thing, talking about transportation to get to, and that that's a matter of being an equitable issue when it comes to being able to, to use the community college models. No one has said on this board that we would want to try to put the cart before the horse in terms of trying to get students to be able to take courses at a community college that they couldn't get to. Those things will have to be worked out. I know personally, I took serious issue years ago with the fact that we did not have busing available to get to the community college when Orange County schools did, because I know at that time, Durham Technical Community College went to both districts trying to make that proposal, and they were prepared to have our students go, and our district did not support the efforts because our district publicly was saying that they felt that our A.P. courses were better than community college courses. I think that's something dangerous to say. I think it can be detrimental to our state as a whole, and I think we have to be careful. Words matter. They really do matter. So I will say for so many different reasons and a lot of different thoughts, and I have listened to more young people than I have just vocal adults in the space, because there are adults who are not in this space. And for us to have a district that say that we are anti-bullying, I am saddened to say that there are so many young people and teachers and parents who have spoken to me, who've made it very clear that they didn't feel safe to come into the space to express their opinions because they feel that trying to say how they feel would be a dangerous situation with the colleagues and peers that they work with and some of the parents in their space. That, that's not a good thing at all. If we're trying to teach our young people that there is a way to listen to each other and to agree to disagree, to be in a positive space, to listen, to have public discourse, but not without traumatic outcomes, how can we do that if we have our adults who are not even okay with being able to speak their piece? So again, I say that's very dangerous. I do agree with Barbara when she says that, that the four-by-four won't fix it. I agree with everybody with that. No one is going to say it's going to be a quick fix. I don't believe that because systems have been in place way too long. I will say that you have to have able-bodied, knowledgeable, caring, uplifting, enriching, encouraging people in the building. If those people are not uplifting, encouraging, consistent, intentional when it comes to teaching all of our children, whether it is seven periods in a day, one period in a day, a one-room classroom with a five-room outside. You're not trying to do that. This is not the place you need to remain. For way too long, we have had children who have not had opportunities for success in many different ways. I don't care if you're from the Cakes Farm community, Damascus Road, Irwin Road, U-Banks, I don't care what side of Chapel Hill, Carboro City Schools you are from. If you're not given every opportunity to do whatever you're supposed to do, from Fifty-Four West to Dodson Hills, then you, we are not doing our jobs. So if our teachers who are able-bodied and excellent, as we say, we get the cream of the crop, if you're not able to want to do this, let us know that. Tell us that you don't want to be able to teach all of them. Let's say it. Because until we're honest about these decisions, and I agree we need universal pre-K, needed a long time ago, which we had it, but as of this- a long time ago, which we had it, but as of this moment, we don't. But at this moment, we do have the opportunity to make a shift to try to help develop a more equitable situation for all involved that walk through those halls of these high schools. So for that reason, I would say it's time to try to listen and work together and collaborate for what we can do between the district, the board, and the community to give each other a chance to uplift our students. Because at the end of the day, you really got to realize that it's not us trying to walk through those halls, it's our babies. It is our babies. So yeah, I definitely will be supporting this.
Sure. I don't have much left to say because the three board members who've spoken before me, I think have pretty well covered it. I did want to just highlight a couple things. My computer is going to sleep here. I wanted to make sure, you know, I will support this, the four by four block schedule. I have had some concerns over the last weeks as we've discussed it more and more. I've had a lot of conversations with community members, with teachers, like Barb said, as well. I've reached out to students, and you know, when it comes down to it, I feel like this plan really supports multiple pathways to success in our district. And that's what I think keeps getting lost when there's been multiple discussions about statistics and evidence. And statistics and evidence are important, don't get me wrong. Like, I think that they absolutely have their place. But I think overall in this district, and you know, I would know I've been a part of it for the last 43 years, has really valued one path over others, and I think we can do better. And I think that this container, as some people have referred to it as, can better support these multiple pathways to success in our community. I also wanted to reiterate, I think Vicky was kind of pointing this out very aptly just a minute ago, that the block schedule, again, is not an end-all be-all, it's not a panacea. I think it's really the block plus, the block, what can we do beyond the block? We can advocate for feeding our kids free breakfast and lunch universally. We can advocate for increased opportunities for tutoring, wraparound services like universal after-school, availability of after-school, and an equitable process in getting in. We can advocate for, you know, other types of supports that really support families from birth all the way through high school. And I think all of those factors are going to be important pieces in our overall effort in trying to combat this opportunity gap that our district has long held. So for those reasons and all of the reasons that my colleagues have mentioned, I will support the four by four block as well.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't prepare anything, but I keep going back to, we, last summer, we heard from a lot of students, we were actually talking about the class rank versus the Roman.
Latin.
No, I'm sorry, I can come up with the phrase. But we heard from many, many students about the pressures that they're under. And part of that, I mean, we've also heard, you know, from students who are saying that having this many classes at one time can be overwhelming, and I think that was part of the impetus of us even looking at this in the first place, in addition to, you know, aligning all of our schools. But another part of it was that they didn't feel as likely to take other arts classes, to take CTE, to take things that were a little bit out of the path that had been chosen for them. And I keep going back to that because these issues come up again. We think about the pressures of parents on the kids, you know, and what they should be doing, and the pressures of saying, this is a system that's always worked and we need to, we should probably keep doing what we're doing because it seems to work. Or some. But we're also hearing from a lot of other people that they have all these stresses, you know, and so I feel like that was, that was what got us here in the first place and that we need to keep reminding ourselves of that. When we start just boiling it down to if you believe in this, then, you know, we don't need to go there. We need to remind ourselves that we're trying to help out the kids who feel like the current system is not supporting them as well as it could. And I think that we found some really good strategies for doing that. I was, I mean, I was, you guys know that I was ready to vote on this last time, so clearly I'm still in support of the four by four. I do want to just reiterate the comments that I made three weeks ago, that I want to make sure that we don't get carried away with saying, oh, we can tweak it for certain things. We talked about this before, like, I think Avid was a great example of a class that could be modified. But if we start going down that path and saying, well, then so would it be calculus, so then we're going to start getting into that idea again of having a system that ends up still being segregated just within the block. So I still want to caution us about continuing that. I know that we're going to continue to look at it and evaluate, but that was always been important to me as well.
Well, I don't, I'm not going to add to what I said the last time. I think a lot of board members shared some of that and then some. I'm going to focus forward, right? And so my ask is to the community, to our staff, to our families and our students, regardless of how the vote goes tonight, we need to move forward together, being supportive of the decision that we're making. You know, we talk about trust, and you know, when I ran, I was like, oh my gosh, our trust is broken with the board and the community. So I want you to trust us like so many of you voted for us. Trust us that we hired a superintendent, and she's gone on to hire staff of wonderful people. I mean, I've really enjoyed over the past couple of years getting to know each and every one of them on a professional level and in their area of expertise, and also personally too. Let's trust them, because the worst thing you can do to a decision that we've made is actively work against it. Okay? So I want us to remember that, from the staff, to the parents, to people who don't have kids in the school, in the community, and even our own kiddos. So whatever happens in the next couple of minutes, when somebody makes a motion or not, somebody seconds it or not, and votes happen or not, then it's the next day, and the task of the staff is to implement what we, the six of us here, Ronnie's not here right now, the six of us here, vote on and decide. And we do it with just as much energy as all of you came out tonight and the weeks coming up advocating. Now I want you to work with us as a board and advocate. Listen to the things that we say we're committed to. We're committed to all of our kids and all of our staff. It disappoints me to hear that people are saying we are not board staff when you come to all the other board members and you hear so many of us fighting, begging for more, pay more money from the state constantly, pushing for Mr. Scott. Look for how we can pay more, all of our certified and classified staff. So I want us to know, please trust us however we vote in just a minute or two. And just let's be committed for this day until it implements, and yet it's going to be a little bumpy and uncomfortable. We've all been through changes in our lives, however, whatever it looked like. But let's just come forward, trust that we have good intentions, you trust us with your kids, trust us with this one, and let's go forward. And we may have some hiccups, and we'll talk about it, and we'll see how we can fix it and tweak it, and then we'll go forward again. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Board members, we've been asked to approve the four by four block with daily flex high school scheduling model, and to direct high school principals and district administrators to use the model's flexibility collaborating with teacher groups to assist, to address instructional and program continuity needs as outlined by the high school schedule assessment guiding committee. That's the recommended resolution that was put forward tonight. Can I have a motion? Do you have a motion to that effect?
It's moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break, everybody.
Thank you all. Hope everybody had a good, a good break. The meeting is called back to order. This takes us to our second item and Dr. Trace, I see you're standing there, so I guess I don't need to introduce you for approval of first reading of Policy three one zero one, options to earn course credits.
That's correct. Mr. Chair, so the administration is seeking approval of first reading of Policy Code thirty one oh one, options to earn course credit for graduation. The changes with this policy are largely technical, meaning that they don't represent new language, but the addition of language found in other support documents such as our course selection catalog and other guidance documents we provide students and families. The update to this policy will provide greater clarity for our students, staff, and families. The policy has been reviewed by, and updated by our policy committee. I would also inform the board and our public that the administration aims to update the regulation, also associated with this policy, Policy thirty one oh one, to align the criteria for enrollment in courses provided by third-party providers, and to establish a review committee with the authority to make exceptions to the enrollment criteria based on extenuating circumstances. And so you may know that the state just adopted a three-year graduation pathway. We often have students who run into medical issues where, you know, extenuating circumstances with more enrollment in third-party course providers, but we want to have a process where we review those things across the district. But with that, you know, we're seeking approval of this policy and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Board members, questions for Dr. Trace? Most heads seem to be shaking. No?
Oh, yeah, I mean Meredith, sorry.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on some of the exceptions? I just, I know that I've like heard a couple of things in the community, folks concerned about kids with chronic medical conditions, for example, mental health, you know, issues, things like that. So could you just be a little bit more specific?
I think those are some of the exceptions. So what happens is, is that when there's a chronic medical issue, a student's education may be interrupted for a period of time, but that may not be the full year. And under our current policy, it doesn't allow students to enroll, for instance, like in a summer course, to kind of make up what was missed during the year. With the review committee, we would be able to kind of look at those exceptions systemically across the board and move students into different options for third-party courses, if that would help them stay on track for a graduation with their cohort. Another example, we talked about our newcomer students who may come to us and they're behind in credits. And it's not enough just to use the year to make up those credits and many families and students are interested in using summer months to do some of that as well. And we do provide summer school for some of our newcomer students, but this would just be another option. But given a, we would like to institute a structure where, you know, we're keeping tabs on that as well. So those are just a few examples that we would consider viable for an exception.
So am I right that what part of this is, is to expand the, some of the prohibitions on when, when you can take virtual public school courses to other independent providers, right?
Right. So currently there are restrictions on NCVPS courses, but there aren't restrictions on non-NCVPS courses. And so we're looking to align those and level the playing field because if you can pay for your course or a third-party course, you have the opportunity to earn more credits. It impacts GPA. It opens up, you know, the possibility of getting through prerequisites faster. And we just want to level the playing field. Parents and students still have the option of taking third-party courses and receiving like a transcript from these institutions. It wouldn't, it just wouldn't impact the GPA and credit of the Chapel Hill Carver City Schools transcript. And they could submit those, and we have students who submit those to colleges as well.
So I guess, I just have a, like a point of clarification, which is, because I heard from a parent that they were told by their school counselor that they could not enroll for something this summer that, that would be covered by this policy, but we hadn't passed it yet. And so I, I do support it, but it does seem like people may have made plans with certain assumptions about the policy that, so I guess, would this, I mean, if you borrow, I, what is the situation there?
No, no, I hear what you're saying, like, so, so course selection happened in the fall.
Right.
I mean, and this is something that Dr. Bob, I mean, Dr. Bales and I have talked about with our team. So there, there are instances where course selection happened before the implementation of this policy. And I think those are the types of things, at least for the year of implementation, we would take in consideration in terms of providing exceptions as well. But that would not necessarily impact a student wanting to take a course this, this summer.
Okay. But I mean, counselors should not have just gone ahead and started to implement this.
No, 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 that's not.
Okay.
Student, and that, and that is to say that currently now, this summer, students and families can pay for third-party courses. And it will impact their transcript.
Got it.
Anybody else? So we're being asked to approve this on first reading, which then means typically it would go to consent agenda. There's no major changes. So can we just have a motion to that effect?
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Dr. Trace. I see you're staying up there, so we'll go to the first reading of Policy Code thirty four hundred, student evaluations and grading.
Sure, thank you. So the administration is also seeking approval of first reading of Policy Code thirty four hundred, student evaluations and grading. The recommend, the recommendation is to establish a grading floor of fifty to be applied to quarterly and final report card grades for middle and high schools. This is a shift in, in language in terms of the policy. So the current policy is, the current language states there's a grading floor of fifty and it's applied to any assignment assessment for which grades are assigned to progress reports and to report cards for middle and high school students. And so our recommendation is to apply the grading floor of fifty to quarterly and final report cards only. And I, I should also mention that the administration is also looking to amend the regulation associated with thirty four hundred, where we're shifting the standard for mastery from seventy percent to eighty percent for reassessment purposes, which would expand potentially the pool of students that could take advantage of reassessment, but also capping the highest score students could earn on a reassessment to eighty percent. Currently it's set at a hundred percent. And so that, that's more associated with the regulation, not the policy. So those are the two recommendations that the administration is, is bringing today for the board. And I'd be happy to answer questions about that. This also was reviewed at our policy committee, but I'll be happy to answer any questions related to that. I should also mention, sorry, Dr. Bales is here and Matt Cohn is also here, who's done some work with teachers throughout our district. If there are questions that you have related to the, to the grading policy, it would be great resources to, to answer those questions. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Dr. Trace. Partly because I'm working off my phone and it's hard for me to read everything. Remind us, before we take questions from the board, this policy came in, it seems like I have this recollection of last year it was brought here with your comments at the time that you wanted to see how it went and go back and fine-tune it based on teacher experiences. Can you catch us up a little bit on that history? I think it's important context.
So the, the policy, I think, was adopted in May of twenty twenty-three, which was last spring. And at that time, we did, as an administration, commit to looking at the implementation of the policy. And largely Dr. Bales and Matt Cohn helped with a lot of that. But just being one-on-one with teachers, looking at how effective it is and being able to track student progress was, you know, a concern of ours. There wasn't a reassessment criteria put into our grading plan. We wanted to see from our teachers how well that was implemented for students. Of course, we've had the fifty-four in for a while since the pandemic, so that wasn't so much new. But I think it was a good opportunity to see with the implementation of the grading plan, you know, you know, how that was playing out as well. So it was just a commitment through our curriculum dialogues that we've conducted throughout the year to be in, in contact with teachers about any concerns or benefits with the, the implementation of the grading plan. We talked extensively in the superintendent's teacher cabinet about it. Those representatives collected feedback from their colleagues in, in their schools and, and, you know, the recommendations that you see here are, it's just the feedback that we received from teachers after a year of implementation.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Board members, you have questions or things to address? Please feel free.
Well, so part of that feedback that we got from the teachers was that it was a little cumbersome, right? Can you tell a little bit more about, like, what specifically, like, because I'm imagining if I'm entering school, scores in Power School, you know, and like, I mean, what, what is it about it that made it difficult for the teachers to do?
Yeah, I can, and I'll defer to some of my colleagues, but we've heard just being able to track attempted assignments versus non-attempted assignments. And so it, under our current model, if you don't attempt an assignment, there's a fifty kind of put in that place. And so there's a bit of an inaccurate view that could be had by some students and parents with respect to that. You know, some teachers use multiple spreadsheets to track that information, but when you're working in, you know, a spreadsheet, Power School, but you're also working in Canvas that also has some grading capabilities. When those things merge, it just became really tricky and cumbersome to, to, to work, to work with that or track that for our teachers. And if you have, you know, over a hundred students that you're working with, and not every student is going to have a missing assignment, but, you know, it, it was just overwhelming with the information we received. I don't know if you all would add anything else to it.
Yeah, I would say on the parent end of that, we've had parents that like aren't necessarily sure when they're looking at their, is this something that's missing? Is it something that my student didn't do? Unless that, you know, for every single one of those, for every single kid, you gotta put a comment off to the side, like, this is missing. And, and like, is it when there's fifteen to twenty assignments, assessments, and then eight times a hundred kids, that's a lot to ask a teacher to continually put that note in there. You know, grades are supposed to be that communication piece between, you know, the teacher and the adult, but that, or the parent, but that doesn't all matter to the grading.
Right, yeah. So fundamentally, a grade is a signal of what a student knows and can do. And with the fifty on every single assignment as a floor, it ceased to operate in that way. So a lot of parents didn't understand, like, it's not that your kid is struggling with this, your kid hasn't even done this. And so for a district that prides itself on the growth mindset and effort and getting better over time to have so many students, not turning in so many assignments was really problematic.
I think it's important to recognize, like, the board's intent in the spring of twenty twenty-three was to provide safety nets for students because I think there is general agreement that, you know, making up the difference between zero and fifty is much different than making up the difference between a fifty and a sixty, or sixty and a seventy. And so, I mean, our teachers believe in safety nets and many of them were doing, in implementing safety nets prior to our grading policy. But we feel like with the recommendations where the fifty floor is at the quarters, but also the final report card, that is a bit of a safety net for students.
So I'm curious, so what happens with those assignments along the way that build up to a grade? So you have all these assignments missing. They're entered as zeros?
Currently.
Well, under this new, how the policy is written?
So it would reflect if the student, what the, the student had, so if they didn't turn it in, they'd have a zero at that point. And so the parents would then be able to say, like, that was a zero, they didn't do it, versus a fifty, if they do it and just get a fifty.
And so what's the implication on grades then? Like, if we're thinking through with that, then it doesn't even matter that there's a fifty floor, they're gonna, they, they're gonna get a fifty, right? If they have a bunch of zeros. You know, so for me, it's, again, I don't love grading. I, I don't love it, right? And I love that we have to put limits on mastery of a eighty percent, you know, because we have too much competition of, I got a whatever, six point oh or nine point oh or whatever kids can get in schools now versus individually, I've mastered this. That's, that's my goal, right? When I'm looking at education, I want all our kids to get to mastery. And so for me saying, well, you're limited mastery at eighty percent on a retake versus, no, I want the kid to get a hundred on retake. Not an eighty. I don't want to cap that because then we're putting a ceiling on how high we want our kids to master stuff. So that, that, that's just my one thought of that cap, you know, they can't, they can only retake up to eighty, right? Because, and I get it, I understand, we've got a district where kids are gaming for grades and that's really sad. Because they shouldn't be gaming for grades. They really should be focusing on themselves and their own personal mastery. Life is not, or not, life is not a competition between me and anyone else. It's me just trying to survive and get through each day, right? So, so for me, that's where I struggle with that eighty percent cap on mastery, right? So it's putting a ceiling on some of our kiddos, like, you can only get it. When, when if they've a hundred percent mastered stuff, we should give them the hundred percent. They've earned it, especially those kiddos who work in, are working hard. So that's just my thoughts on that. And I'm just really concerned about the fifty floor. You know, I have three kids here. They're all different. They're all so special and different. And so I, you know, I know what it looks like to see a kiddo who, when they're really passionate about something, they get a hundred. And that same kid, when they're like, eh, not today, don't like any of those assignments, not doing them. And I think about them and it's like, now we're gonna have a zero and it's gonna show that they have a fifty. And that's not a reflection that they mastered the stuff. I know my kid. And so I'm just curious, what are we doing to make sure educators can tease that out? Because I haven't seen that done successfully yet in Chapel Harbor City Schools. I said, literally, I literally could open up Power School right now and see it. Now, sometimes I do see that being done well, but I can say, I don't see that being done well either. And so I want to put the onus, again, I've always said it, getting kids to mastery is the job of the adults. And so if a, if staff person sees that their kiddo has one hundreds on stuff and they have zeros, I'm putting the onus on the adult to make sure that they get the work turned in so they can assess them, not have them sit there and say, oh, they didn't turn the work in, they get a fifty and that's it. Because that's demoralizing for a lot of our kids too. So that, that's just my one fear. That's why I supported the fifty floor, because at least they were starting at a certain point, especially with all those assignments. It means a lot. It's a lot. It's a lot for them to keep up with and work when people are doing stuff and stuff is missing. It's also a lot for the kids to keep up with as a parent who sits up really late at night sometimes helping kids do their assignments and stuff. So I just, I just want us to think about that. I know this is tough because we're trying to balance, like, being supportive of students, being supportive of the staff who have to actually do the work for a lot of kids at a time. My focus is on being able to communicate to kids that, yes, they've mastered something, not it's a lot of work where there's, you know, we've got a couple of things that are just not fair with our grading. Teachers balancing a lot of work and then we've got some kids who are just wanting to continue to, you know, improve their grade, which is fine. I, I mean, I think that's great. They want to continue to get to one hundred percent mastery. But I'm just really concerned about the kids who are sitting there teetering at that, struggling to get the work in and just trying to get to proficiency.
You know, I would also say, you know, this is, it's kind of like an iteration of a process. Like, I don't think we were, you know, one hundred percent successful. Like, I know a lot of teachers, they don't put zeros in the grade book. They might put it incomplete, you know, especially if students. Especially if students are missing assignments and, and most teachers will say, if you don't get your assignment in before X, then, you know, it turns into a, a, a zero. And so I, you know, I don't wanna make it seem like, you know, there are just zeros across the board when students don't turn in assignments. But there's nothing precluding that. But we do use the, um, the, the designation of incomplete as well, quite often, that you might see in Power School or on progress reports, that type of thing. With respect to the, the cap on the eighty, um, you know, we just received some feedback that, from our teachers, that, um, with a cap, we might be able to target better the students who I think would, would actually need, um, this in terms of, you know, not trying to bomb a test so that you can, you know, have more time to study to get the one hundred. Um, and, um, we just saw it as more equitable, even when it came to, um, reteaching. Because you have to, uh, participate in reteaching before you can reassess, right? And there was some indication that, um, students who we wanted to be in that reteaching mode, uh, were not showing up, because it was, it just became overwhelming with students who are just trying to, to, to reach the one hundred.
My issue is with what they could earn up to. So if they hit that, if they fell below that eighty percent, that they could only earn up to eighty percent, why not a hundred percent? Like, if they're, they, they like made a seventy, but then when they sat down and they went through reteaching with the teacher, just because maybe they didn't understand an entire section of, you know, a math test or something. And the teacher sat down with them a little bit more one-on-one, because they got missed, that this kiddo just was not getting it. And they did that, and they were able to get a hundred. That, that's my sticking point right there. Like, if, I, I get it, that eight percent, I've heard that, you know, it's like, that seventy was too low. Um, for kid, you know, we were missing some kids between seventy, eighty. I'm just concerned that once the kids are re-taught, that's a significant, that's twenty percent. That's a lot of information.
Other board members?
So I wanted to talk about both the regulation and the policy. And, um, because I, to me, the regulation is, is really makes just a lot of sense based on my understanding of what you said in the policy committee, which is, who seems to be taking advantage of the opportunity for reteaching. And it's not the kids that the regulation wasn't really intended to catch. Um, and to me, eighty makes sense. I mean, that's what eighty, eighty is what you often have in IEPs. Like, that constitutes mastery. I think seventy was too low and eighty gets it right. So I realize it's a regulation, so technically we're just supposed to give feedback, but I give you thumbs up. Um, with the policy, I, I was super excited about the policy. And then I got, we got a very thoughtful email from one of our former colleagues who included some, um, uh, some research about the demoralizing effects of zeros. Um, and I guess I just would like your, anybody's thoughts on that. And kind of this question about that the, what, anything below a sixty is, is failing, like, that's a lot of grade, right? And whether you think it would be true to the spirit of what you're trying to do to have a slight modification to allow for some distinction between kids who try and don't, like, could it be the fifty goes for the kid who does something? And just as a, and, but everybody else gets an incomplete or a zero? Or is that, like, is that what you're trying to do, A, and B, I guess logistically, I'm also interested in what that would look like? But I mean, I mean, I just, I've seen it in, with people I live with. Like, you, I don't, I do worry about kids thinking they can do nothing and get a fifty. And then that's not how other things will be. And I know high school isn't only to prepare you for the real world, it's also to help you get through high school. But I feel like it's some problematic messaging about expectations that I, I, I'm glad to see us try to undo, but I just don't want us to overcorrect it.
Sure. Um, uh, what I would say about that is, you know, that idea came up when we were first looking to implement the grading policy.
Idea of like distinction between didn't do anything versus did do anything?
Um, but in terms of, you know, tracking, I, I, I think it's like one of those, you know, middle of the road, because you, you're still kind of, you know, establishing a fifty-four for attempted assignments. Um, and I don't think there's anything that I saw in the research that would suggest that, you know, there's something wrong with that, um, so.
I was adding, I think on the teacher side of it, some of their feedback was like, what constitutes attempted? Like, if it's a math, am I just gonna write some numbers down and I'll have attempted it?
Yeah.
Um, so there is some concern as to, okay, what does that actually look like? And is that gonna cause some disparities between teachers? Like, this is what I accept, this is what you accept. Um, I mean, it kind, it goes back to the testing, the retesting. There are many kids, you know, that are told like, just bomb the test first time so you can see it once, and then you can do the retake. Um, that's not what we wanted either. Um, so there's lots of it, and, and it's on both sides of all of it. You know, I will say the biggest thing for me with all of it, whether it's fifty and the eighties, the eighty, you know, we went into space and we saw what the retesting looked like. And it was a lot of kids that had like a ninety-five trying to get a hundred. And like, the kids that we really were trying to support, like, were being whispered at by the teacher in the corner of the room, like, trying not to disturb the kids that were testing. And that's, you want them up, like, demonstrating what's going on, not just, um, and I think for the fifty, it's really, it's really teacher-based and like, are you motivated to make sure that kid does it? Is your assignment, are you, you know, demonstrate to your, your student, like, this is important? Like, if you don't have it done, then you're gonna come at lunch because it's important. If it's important enough for you to give you, it's important enough for you to do. Which also doesn't mean you're giving fifty assignments. It means that you're giving purposeful assignments, um, and making sure that, you know, very clear, like, this is what you need, not what I think you need.
I'd like to add to, you know, both of you raised concerns about zero and fifty and morale. And I think most teachers, and certainly all good teachers, hold those concerns close to their heart. I think the goal would be, when a student is showing up for class, there are no assignments that aren't done. I actually don't think that's very utopian. Like, if I'm a teacher and now we have eight assessments, eight assignments that are not assessments in a quarter, and that's what most teachers are giving, I think if you're there every day, we should have all eight of those in. In fact, I think when one or two aren't there, that's a crisis, right? And says, I need to call your mom, I need to meet with you, we need to meet with your counselor. And I do think that when we were giving them fifties, it made it harder to have a sense of urgency. Made it harder for parents and students to understand that. But I don't think it would be acceptable for us to come back in a year or so and say, well, we've reduced to only three missing assignments per class. Like, we should be aiming for zero, and I think really good teachers should be able to get awfully close to that.
Could you just remind us, what's the penalty for late work currently? Like, what's the policy about that? Because I guess what I don't want, I want kids to try the assignment and to not have it be like, well, I've already, I'm already four days late, and so, um, you know what I mean? So I guess I just, yeah.
Well, that's, that's where there's some leeway. The, the, the penalty is up to ten percent. Um, but, you know, many teachers, they're like, just turn it in by this day. But we did give, because that was also a sticking point when we were talking to our teacher groups. Like, we didn't wanna just, you know, we wanted to give them some leeway, uh, in terms of, you know, late work.
Okay, so it sounds like trying to distinguish between an attempted assignment versus a missing assignment would not really be considered a friendly amendment by you. Which is like, I really look into you, because I'm, I mean, I, this is, I didn't realize that you, that was discussed last time.
Yeah, I mean, that was a, a pretty big part of, uh, you know, one of the things that this proposal is about.
I'm, I'm like, I say that multiple things can be true at the same time, and I agree with all, all of these. And that we definitely have, um, a lot of students in our high schools right now that will intentionally do that on a test so that they can retake. And, and we know that that was not the intention of reteaching opportunities and retesting opportunities. But when you hear, um, our students intentionally doing those and saying those things, I think, um, students who really need some of the reteaching so that they can retake, they feel kind of some kind of way and don't wanna be in that same space. And I've seen students talk about that, that when they're wanting to try to get some help or access some help, there are so many people trying to go in at lunchtime to try to take another test or, you know, so that they can bump their grade up to blah, 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 blah. And so the, the students know what it is and who it is. I mean, and, you know, I, I can remember parents talking about, it's like, oh, they don't know which one is it, uh, no, they, they know. They absolutely know who's struggling in their class, even if the person never said anything or never showed it. They know who's struggling, who's not. And, and it, and it's, um, a lot more difficult, and it's not as if we have the space and the opportunity for you to have this group completely over there and this group completely over there. But, so I understand the reasoning, and it's one of those things, it's like the trick in this is gonna be in the nuances. It's not gonna be all of this or all of that. But I agree that if moving it up will help capture some of the ones, and I do hear your, with the, with the fact that you want those who are doing the relearning. If you have someone that struggled and then all of a sudden that teacher found a way to open that door and it's a light bulb, yeah, I get it. You want them to be able to have that hundred because they earned it and they deserved it. And you would hope what would happen is when they see that, that then they can say, okay, you, you helped me figure that out, now I know. And that gives them a little more of a confidence booster, so they can then go on to that next one and get on, in front of it and say, okay, now let's try to make sure I can get this out and get it taken care of. So I, I see where it's a struggle on both sides and, and I don't think that whatever policy, I'm, I'm just being honest here, that we have on the piece of paper is gonna stop high schoolers from being high schoolers. And what I would say is, they're gonna have to accept the fact that as they continue and they go on to whatever they're gonna do post-secondary, that they're not gonna get that safety net and that buffer zone and that second opportunity most of the time. So the best we can do is to say, let's have a good phased effort to put your best foot forward. And for teachers to say that this process will be for people who need it. If you're not in need of these resources, let's think about our community and stop trying to pull. That's, that's really what this is all we're going to. There are, there are young people who don't need those additional resources, taking them because it's available. And to ease back for the ones who do need it to have that space and opportunity.
I also want to, to, to one of your points, acknowledge the, the demand that is placed on teachers with retesting. Because it's not just, you have to create one test, but then there are multiple versions of each test that you have to create because of our retesting policy. And we didn't give teachers additional time to do retesting either. And so it's, it's not just one test, it's each test that a teacher provides. There are multiple versions of that, that they're working on. And so it does represent quite an increase in load on, on our, our teachers. And, and what I'm saying is, you know, perhaps with this policy, we can contain that a little bit. I mean, we still believe that that's appropriate for students, particularly the students that we wanna target with this. Um, like, we'll still do multiple versions, but I think it would put some parameters around. Just being able to manage it is, is, is quite difficult.
Anybody else? So the, uh, recommendation is to approve the first reading of this policy. And can we, the chair have a motion to that effect?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed that. I was in.
Firelight.
Baldwin, Mike. Um, here, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? If it passes, you can ask. Thank you, Dr. Trice. I think we can finally take a break. This brings us to the superintendent's report, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget development update and draft allotment formulas. Mr. Jonathan Scott.
Thank you, Dr. Griffin. Good evening. Good evening, board members, faculty, cabinet, members of the public. Um, gonna try to be relatively brief in my comments tonight, I recognize we still have quite a bit on the agenda. Just wanted the superintendent and district administration wanted to take a moment, come back to the board and give the board an update where we stand currently with the budget development process for the twenty twenty-five, uh, fiscal year budget. Uh, so first I wanted to give you a brief budget update and then we'll talk a little bit about allotment formulas. So I tried to do is, um, like, everything that we've done so far as a board and administration with the request of the county commissioners, just kind of give the board an update and the public an update. Um, so I just wanted to kind of go through line by line to some of the things that were in question a few weeks ago have kind of become a little more clear now that the county manager has recommended her proposed budget for next year. When the board and the administration initially developed the budget, we were anticipating about a three percent increase to the county appropriation. Um, the county has in fact, uh, the county manager has recommended a five percent increase. So looking at about an additional one point two million dollars in county appropriation coming our way this year, which is good news. Um, so as we look at revenues now, uh, between the, uh, increase in the special district tax inflationary increase and the five percent increase from the county manager's proposed budget, we're looking at about an additional three point six million dollars next year coming in in revenues, which is good news because our continuation budget, um, is just shy of that at three point three million. Now, I want to be very clear that that's the continuation budget without, uh, any of the items that were in the corrective action plan added back. But, um, as it stands right now, without looking at those other two items, we could be looking at a potential surplus of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, of course, that's almost a rounding error with a two hundred million dollar budget, but that will give us a little bit of ability to start to think about rebuilding our fund balance. Um, so we got some good news from the county manager's proposed budget. Um, and we're looking at about a three, three hundred and forty thousand dollar potential budgetary surplus. Now, of course, we've been, there's been a lot of talk, um, the state of North Carolina, most recently, I think, headed a nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand million dollar budget surplus. I believe three to four hundred million of that has been targeted towards, uh, public school vouchers at this point, with the rest of it kind of up in the air, what the general assembly is gonna do with it. There's been a lot of talk about an increase in compensation for state employees. Again, we talked a few months ago, the biennial budget, you know, inflation was coming in. When that budget was developed, they were anticipating a two percent inflation this year. Looks like we're gonna be closer to four percent when we get to June. So again, we think there could be a good chance the state will increase salaries beyond the three percent. Uh, if that scenario was to unfold and the state increased an additional two percent, uh, it would cost the district another one point four million dollars. And then our budget surplus of three hundred and forty thousand dollars would be wiped away, and we'd be looking at a one point one million dollar deficit. And then beyond that, um, obviously the reinstatement of the corrective action plan in its entirety would cost the district another two point eight million dollars, bringing the entire deficit to just under four million dollars. I just kind of wanted to paint that picture for the board and the public. This is kind of where we're at. I believe the general assembly's short session can run through July fifteenth, um, so we should have some more information soon. Um, so we'll continue to update you as we learn more of what's gonna come out of the general assembly. Moving on, I wanted to, uh, just kind of bring this into focus. Um, at the last board meeting, we brought forward on consent, uh, results of financial, uh, financial operations through the third quarter. Um, we are starting to see that anticipated two point five million dollar loss start to correct itself a little bit due to some of the corrective action plan that's been in place. So we're anticipating that two and a half million dollar loss will be closer to two million dollars at the end of the year. However, we gotta remember that we only have three point six million dollars in fund balance in total. So if we do in fact lose two million dollars as we're anticipating this year, it's really gonna drop our fund balance down to somewhere around the one point five to two million dollar mark. Again, uh, bringing our percentage down to somewhere between one and two percent. So we're projecting about one point two percent on designated fund balance at year end. I wanna just kind of key in there, uh, tried to make it very clear in the abstract that we wrote, um, that that's gonna present a problem with trying to balance the budget if those two percent increases come, come into play. And if we want to reinstate everything in the corrective action plan, if the board only has one point five million dollars in available fund balance to appropriate, you know, obviously, it's gonna be impossible to balance a budget if we have a four million dollar deficit. So I just wanna keep that top of mind for everyone, that this year will be the year that, where the board will not be able to lean into that fund balance as it has in years past to be able to balance the budget, and it will most likely be facing additional reductions. Anybody have any questions about fund balance?
Dr. Jonathan, is this where I just say, we have got to continue to tighten our belts? And we can't just sit here, a one point five million dollar fund balance is simply insufficient.
Absolutely.
Period, end of discussion. And I think you're realistically talking about, we're gonna need to find in the neighborhood of five million dollars, eight million dollars in our budget in terms of reductions and places in the next twelve months. Moving forward, if they give a five percent salary increase to the teachers, which I hope they do, I think we all do. But it's one of those ironies, the more the teachers get, the more we lose in terms of we have to find more sources to pay for things. Am I being the Grinch and too negative here, or is this like?
No, I think you characterize that adequately correctly. No, I think you characterize that adequately correctly. Um, again, with, with the corrective action plan removed from it, if they give the two percent, we're going to need, I think it was one point four million. But to operate at the same level that we operated this year, if they give the two percent, it's, it's four million dollars that we're going to have to come up with.
Yeah, before we get, because I think the next part of this is allotments, right? So because we have a lot of new community members here who typically don't tune into this and we've been talking about this since I've been on the board. How do we get here with our fund balance? I can answer that question, but I'd love for you and I'd love the community to pay attention to this because, you know, it shows our commitment as a board to continue to invest in our staff, but it's gotten us here because we, again, tried to maintain that ninety seven percent staffing, kind of generally on average across all positions, but we're, we're at that point, right?
Sure. I, I can try to give us a brief five-year history here. Um, so obviously two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty was pre-pandemic. The district was operating in relative, uh, you know, year over year, kind of revenue neutral year over year and that there was not a lot of profit or loss, we had pretty adequate fund balance. Um, then comes the pandemic in twenty twenty. We had a huge influx of federal dollars in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, um, that were able to allow us to keep our fund balance pretty stable. Um, we didn't receive any meaningful increases and the board did not receive any meaningful increases from the county during that time. Uh, obviously it was a state of emergency. The county was trying to, you know, stay finance, you know, trying to, to make sure that they were able to continue to operate, recognizing the district was receiving pandemic relief money. However, no, what no one expected was the great resignation that happened after the pandemic. Um, and what that, what happened as a result of that is it put a lot of pressure on, um, market, prevailing market rates for not only certified employees but also classified employees, right? Um, so we very quickly found, or the board found themselves in a position where our, we were experiencing tremendous turnover, not only classified positions but more specifically, or more specifically classified positions, probably bus drivers, um, office professionals. You know, the market in RTP was such that it really drove up those wages and we just had a, uh, exodus of classified employees. Um, so what the board did at the encouragement of the county commissioners was to lean into that fund balance during the twenty twenty two year, I believe, um, and the board very boldly appropriated five million dollars of that, um, sixteen percent fund balance, which was about fifteen million dollars at the time, uh, in order to implement, uh, pretty aggressive pay increases for classified employees and increase local supplements for certi- certified employees by about two percent. Um, again, that was at the encouragement of the county commissioners, recognizing that the board had a large fund balance at that time and that there was an emergency situation. And, um, true to their word, to the best of their ability, after we started depleting that fund balance, the county did provide the largest percentage increase to public education that it had in recent history at least that I can remember. However, it wasn't adequate, uh, to cover the entirety of it. So we had that going on and then the other thing that the board and every other business and every other, um, household in the United States experienced, uh, through twenty-two to twenty twenty-four is a period of extremely high inflation. So not only were wages costs going up, skyrocketing, um, which was, you know, necessary in order to retain employees, we started noticing our non-personnel lines were increasing, uh, they're increasing, some lines were increasing ten to fifteen to twenty percent, um, specifically utilities, risk management, professional services. And all of those lines had not had any budgetary adjustments in the last several years. Of course, you know, it's a, the budget is great, though we can't turn off the power when we reach the, um, you know, utility budget at the high school for the year. When we hit that in May, it's, uh, June. So all of those things kind of, um, created a perfect storm. Um, that coupled with, um, I mean, that's pretty much it. Um, so we went in, you know, we went into, uh, we ended fiscal year twenty twenty two with a, um, trying to remember exactly, with a, somewhere around a three point six million dollar loss. Fiscal year twenty twenty three, the board experienced, uh, literally a six million dollar loss. So between those two years, we saw ten million dollars of fund balance thrown out of the district. The twenty twenty four year, again, the county commissioners did the best that they could, appropriating ten percent, we got an increase to the special district tax. It is correcting, um, you know, we're not going to see a six and a half million dollar loss this year, but again, you know, we are expecting a two million dollar or so more about there loss. Um, so that's kind of how the fund balance has dwindled down. Um, we've seen this happen over the last twenty years a couple times. It usually follows, uh, you know, the last time this happened was the, uh, the recession in two thousand eight and the inflow of stimulus dollars, you know, like that kind of built up the fund balance and we had to deplete it over time in order to keep everyone employed. So it kind of moves as a wave through time, but it made no mistake, now is the time to correct that, we've got to turn this, uh, turn this graph back, back up. Um, I don't know if that's what you were.
No, that was, that was perfect. I mean, just hitting on the things that we need to retain staff and also just pay people what they deserve. That's just period, right? I mean, the classified staff more than deserved to and continue to deserve to be being, being paid a living wage and beyond because that living wage is not a living wage, right?
And even when you, just for further clarity on that point, you know, when the board adopted the new pay scales for classified staff, we had a market adjustment, uh, they went out and did analysis of market rates across the triangle. The board, I think, appropriated just under two million dollars for classified employees. The total cost of implementation in twenty twenty dollars was just under four million dollars and that was in twenty twenty. So, you know, the board obviously did as much as they possibly could, but I would expect that if we went out with the prevailing market rates again, there's still a pretty large gap, I'm sure. Um, so, you know, there's still more work to be done there. I applaud you in every budget that you brought to the county since, you look to try and close that gap and anticipate working with you all in the future to continue that.
Yeah. And I, and I, I just want to emphasize the utility cost. That is so huge. I mean, it's impacting all of us, but, you know, we operate a lot of facilities and they are used not only for us but the community because, you know, we use our, you know, have a lot of rentals and things like that. We have to pay the utility cost there and they're slowly but surely, the utilities are starting to eat into our percentage of where we were with personnel versus non-personnel cost. And so that, that percentage is starting to shift and so we're seeing the utility costs are, are one of our leading impacts.
Yeah, I think of several years ago, we had eighty-five percent, the local budget was eighty-five percent personnel.
Mm-hmm.
And now I think it's around eighty-two percent just because of the bleeder and all those inflationary factors. And it's not just utility we're seeing, risk management, risk management is just, like, we're actually working on insurance renewals right now.
Yeah, that's.
Totally out of control.
Yeah, it's impacting a lot of industries. So thank you, thank you for kind of helping with that.
You're welcome. And then just quickly, again, since we have everybody, um, here, um, we've got three lines, um, horizontal lines on that graph. Um, so the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, has, uh, recommendations on fund balance. A good rating is a eight percent of fund balance and a healthy rating is sixteen percent of fund balance of current year expenditures. Um, a good rating would reflect about one month of operating cash. The district could operate for a month without any additional revenues. The green line would be two months. And the red line denotes a five point five minimum target that the county has for us, uh, which I think is, uh, two, two and a half weeks of operating cash, but just to kind of put that in perspective. Obviously, we, um, you know, we were at a point where we had one and a half to two months of operating cash in the bank in twenty twenty and now, uh, at the end of this year, we'll have about, about two weeks of operating cash in the bank.
And I know this presentation doesn't include cash flow analysis. We look at that month, I mean, it comes up as we need to, but I know you do share that with us in our finance facilities and operations committee, that that's of particular interest, especially when you talk about fund balance. These are minimum bars, not maximum bars, so the fact that we're sitting even below the county minimum bar says a lot.
Right.
And, and obviously we aren't going to talk about cash flows right this second, but that's a concerning line trend for me and the fact that we're sitting so far below the county minimum and what does that mean for cash flows, especially when we go into next school year and being able to make payroll and all those things as well.
Right. And, and as you know, the special district tax is collected in December, so that's a pretty significant cash inflow. And if your cash out isn't seed that before you collect it, then you're going to run into issues. Okay. And I, I want to kind of briefly look at this because I know Mr. Shiroki has a presentation also. Um, so just wanted to very quickly, um, without going into too much detail, uh, talk about personnel allocations because I know that's a hot topic. Um, and I wanted to, uh, reference everybody to the abstract that we included our draft allotment formulas for next year in the abstract. We also included, um, DPA's, DPI, NCDBI's personnel allotment formulas, um, and other allotments. So if anybody wants to go out and look, uh, then get a real good idea of how the state funds us versus how the Chapel Hill Carver City Schools, um, adds additional dollars on top of what the state funds us. And I'm just going to share two, um, two breakdowns real quick with the board and the public. Um, and this is a breakdown of FTEs by source of funds. So if, just want to kind of call everyone's attention to a couple items. One is the state provides just about fifty-three percent of our total FTE with the local funds are provided just under forty percent. We have seven hundred and forty-seven employees that are one hundred percent funded by local dollars. Keeping in mind that all thousand employees that are funded by state dollars receive either a classified supplement of five and a half to ten percent or a local supplement of eighteen to twenty-seven percent from local funds. So even though we have a thousand FTE on the state funds, we are offering a supplement beyond that locally, which is how we're able to attract and retain top talent in the triangle, being one of the highest supplement, uh, supplement issuing districts in the state. So even though we only see a thousand FTE there, there's a good chance that every one of those thousand, at least ten percent of their pay is coming from local and a good chance of you have more than that. So wanted to present it by FTEs for the district or for the board and the public. Also wanted to just kind of, I know there's been a lot of focus on, um, central office and district administration. Um, if you look across, uh, that particular column there, you can see the district administration at the central office level only accounts for three point three percent of FTEs across the district. So just wanted to point that out.
Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
So what you just said about the supplement and the forty percent of local funds, is this appropriate time for me just to remind the public and everybody that while the state of North Carolina has a legal obligation to provide a sound basic education, all its students here in our district, it's paying for less than fifty percent of our annual operating budget.
That would be true.
So we are dependent on over fifty percent of our budget is from our local tax dollars and our county commissioners and, you know, that's simply not acceptable down the road. But the attack on public education in Raleigh is beyond real. It's real dollars. They're not supporting the students and the school districts in North Carolina. And people need to start speaking up and speaking out to the general assembly and not our legislators. Trust me, ours are here, they're with it, but we got a crisis. It is beyond acceptable. So I just continue to want to point that out when I get a chance because I know people are going to fumble around to find where does the bond discussion start when they look at the tape of our meeting tonight? So maybe they'll have to find, what's that about yelling about? Anyway. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, get your gloss over this, but this is kind of the dollars associated with the FTEs I presented earlier. Again, seventy-five million from the, uh, from the state funds and personnel, sixty-three million from local funds. But I just wanted to talk again, um, you know, the, the budget is driven by personnel. It's eighty-two percent of the budget. So we have to allocate, uh, really HR has to allocate with adopted allocation formulas. So again, I just wanted to kind of go over the proposed changes to the allocation formulas. These are representative of the correction action, corrective action plan we presented to you in February. So all of the draft allotment formulas that we presented for next year, uh, for your information tonight, include these reductions. Don't want to go over in great detail, but we can see the TA reduction in fourth and fifth grade, uh, the reduction of the PE allocation, um, and then the class size reduction teachers at the middle and high schools along with, uh, the administrative assistants at the high schools and the, uh, one point five media assistant at the, or Marjus High School. And again, those reductions would tie back to that additional, I'll just go back to it. Those reductions are reflective of that, uh, two point eight million dollars of reinstatement. Uh, but in order to build our budget, you know, we have to build it based on assumptions of personnel and allotment formulas and that's how we're going to allot our schools, uh, unless we see significant change, uh, in the budget over the next, next couple of months. And at that, I'd be happy to take any questions. And again, we'll come back to you as the picture becomes clearer and we learn more from where the general assembly is going to take us next year.
George, if you don't mind, just I, I know we didn't explicitly state it on slide eight, but there's, this discussion has been going on for a few months now and that this is not a reduction in force, it is through attrition.
Correct, correct. And that's.
So we're still on that track.
Absolutely. Expressly stated, uh, in the abstract. And in fact, that is, uh, the primary driver of why we're seeing, you know, that anticipated two and a half million dollar loss starting to come down to two million dollars is because as, uh, we move through this fiscal year, some of those vacancies, we're starting to collect lax salaries on those. So it's beginning to work, it's beginning to turn the ship. Um, and over the course of next year, it may take a year and a half for all of those positions to matriculate out. We're committed to doing it through attrition without a reduction in force.
And that's an important point of to say, attrition means you get the money because people leave the jobs and you don't fill it again.
Right.
And a reduction in force means you're laying off real people from their jobs in plain English. And so the corrective action plan is paying off already, is your point?
It is.
Thank you.
And so the reason why the percentages on slides, I don't know, the second to last slide, the two, the FTE and then the cost of employment.
Mm-hmm.
So the percentages in the last column on each of those is not the same and that's because it just depends on the particular.
Correct. So this is just a count of, so just FTE, obviously, um, full-time equivalent, so one full-time employee, uh, and then this is actual dollars. And these are, these are based on average salaries, so it may not be accurate to penny, uh, but we tried to, what we did is we multiplied the, uh, FTEs by average salaries to come up with us.
Thank you, Jonathan. Love you to. Um, this brings us to the overview of the twenty twenty four bond project proposal. Al Seroki is going to do a presentation and I want to put a little context on it, um, for, for all of us, both historical and right up to today. So this is all about the bond proposal and our capital needs. And I've been here in the district for over forty years and in the last ten years, there's been a constant discussion about we need some new schools. Our schools are old. Um, this is not a new, nobody's just like, oh, where did you get that idea? Um, it's been well known. Our county commissioners have arrived at a conclusion that this long overdue as well. And I just want to say that we have a county commission now that is education friendly and they're doing everything they can to support schools and one is promoting three hundred million dollar bond. About two years ago, the district, our district commissioned a consultant report to look at the condition of our older schools and make some recommendations. At about the same time, the county had put together a work group, capital needs work group of Orange County school personnel, Chapel Hill Carver personnel and the board of county commissioners. Um, and from that group, when they got our report and they had been trying to figure out ways to look at capital needs, it became really apparent that the county commissioners had trouble knowing how to compare Orange County schools against Chapel Hill Carver as we were using different sources and different models of analysis. And one of the upshots of that time was the county commissioners decided, uh, with full support of the work group, but they decided to hire a consultant. And that's the woofer that we all talk about, uh, a. A consulting firm to come in and do an analysis of both school districts and every building in it to look at facility condition, educational adequacy for the future. There are different parameters and Al can get into that. That report was one we're developed with, and Al will talk about it, I'm sure. They worked closely with WOOPR here in the district, hour by hour and day by day, to make sure WOOPR saw everything that we needed them to see so that when they prepared their report, it had accurate data in it. And WOOPR's job was to deliver the data and some recommendations. And again, he'll, he'll talk about that, but there's a lot of confusion in the public right now that WOOPR somehow is driving this or told us we had to do something. And they didn't. They provided a recommendation to the county commissioners and to the district and the community. And we're using that because the county commissioners want to fund a three hundred million dollar bond project appropriately. They want to make sure the money is well spent. And they're using WOOPR as a guideline when we go to them and say, here's our plan. They wanted our plan. The county commissioners did and they needed it before May twenty-first. Our staff presented the plan to our financing facilities committee on May fourteenth. Two days later, we were scheduled to have it in this board meeting. We spent five hours talking about high school schedule assessment that night. And at eleven PM, we decided as a board that we would postpone the discussion until tonight so that we could have a little more time and give it the attention it needed. But we also approved Al to take the plan to the commission for presentation with the understanding that we could modify it as needed when we actually got to talking about it. In the meantime, and if I could take back a decision, I probably would have said, we all should just stay here on May sixteenth at eleven PM and work till two AM and talk about the bond. But it was the chair's decision to say, and nobody on this table argued with me when I said, let's postpone it. You know, I kind of regret that, but so what? Here we are. In the interim, it's been the longest three weeks between two board meetings that I've ever experienced because everybody is rightfully anxious and concerned when they see, oh my God, my school, my neighborhood, whatever. So I'm not making any light about that. Concerns are real. But there's a lot of misinformation floating around out there about who said what and what's going to happen and what's going on. So tonight, we're at the point where Al's going to present the report that we should have had first so then we could know what we're talking about. And we'll move from there about alternatives and next steps and where to go as you do your presentation tonight. And I, but I just want to put out there that, you know, we're listening to people and nothing is a done deal. And if anybody tells you that the board said this or the board said that, they're not telling the truth because the board's sitting right here and nobody speaks for the board. And that's a tough one for us, even me as chairman. I, when I open my mouth, people think, oh, the board's talking. And I have to be extremely careful. So we can't come out and just start saying things or nothing good happens. And we have a practice and it's actually in policy of acting as a full board, period, only end of discussion. So there's no secrets. Everything is transparent. You may have only just heard about it in the past couple of weeks. That is true. But we have talked about it in public at meetings for two years. And there's a progression here. And I don't say that in a defensive way. I want people to know this didn't just happen. And so that brings us to tonight. And Al, I don't know if that was a setup or a setback. That's sort of a lead in for you.
So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hamlet and guests. Many of whom I've had great rich conversations with, but I'd be remiss not, remiss not to say that to you. I hope that we do not spend three hours, as you suggested, knowing it's ten o'clock. But you did provide great context and I hope that in the presentation, I may not have to cover slides in certain detail because knowing that this has been presented previously, this is the first time, and I'm trying not to have my backside to you for the next whatever time, right? Sorry. This is the first time that it has been presented, though the county commissioners have received it, the facility finance committee has received it. So I'm having to present this really in pure form. Now, I will tell you, some of the slides have been modified from what was originally posted because there were some points of clarification and I thought it would be helpful. But at the same time, this presentation, I hope to be able to interject some clarification and at least some comments to give context, though you have provided a really good one. Because I think it is very, it's very important to state that through this effort that the county did hire a consultant who was tasked to explicitly only look at optimization of the inventory and find the best, most efficient way to get our kids in newest facilities possible. That is what they were tasked to do. They were tasked to find that way. And now it's time for us to be able to take that proposal that I'm going to show tonight and then for us to, you know, that's the what. We just got to figure out how we're going to go about it and make it mix. So the first thing I would just like to start off with, and make sure I get the right clicker, is, and many of you I know have seen this, but we are going to talk a little bit about the Chapel Hill approach, the findings of WOOPR, the plan, and also talk about knowing that the need is greater than the means and we'll talk a little bit about that because they are big numbers, but you're not able to get a lot done when you look at the amount of need that we have as a district. And I'll provide some context with that. Then we will provide some next steps. So in the process, this is where our chair just, just talked about the inception of the capital working group. We hired WOOPR. The goals, the overarching goals were ultimately to make the best informed decision on how to prioritize the spending and to make a cohesive plan for the county commissioners to evaluate between Orange County and Orange County schools. Again, we, we see that the ultimate end result of deliverable was the long-range facilities optimization plan. And they took into account where they were tasked by the capital work group to not just look at the state of our facilities, but to look at educational adequacy, meaning look at our schools, compare them to modern standards, be it DPI or national best practices, and see if the rooms have the materials, the spacing, the flexibility in order to provide modern day instructional practices, best practices. And they did that for both of our school districts. And then at the same time, do a state of facilities to kind of give a, a very detailed approach of major systems, be it mechanical, electrical, safety, be it fire safety, and to look at all of that and to be able to say with that, because we have not had someone go into our buildings and go to that level in the past, they basically looked at the age of our building, the age of our equipment and did life cost cycles. They actually went in and put their eyes on it. And that's where we had a lot of conversations with them to be able to say, yeah, you might think that only has five years, but our maintenance folks say it's got six or seven years because they have been maintaining it. But this one that you say has ten years, it really, we think it only has five years. We're out there every day working on it. So we did a lot of back and forth where we matched our work orders and just qualitative information coming from the maintenance staffs in order to get the state of the facilities. But what they saw, they recorded and they took lots of photographs that are in the report. We've talked about the timeline of where we've been and then obviously where we are. And it really started back in March of twenty-three when they hired the consultant. That's when the momentum really picked up. And just to put on record, there have been multiple presentations that I presented, even the consultants hired by the county have gone over Zoom and all of that as well as with our facility finance group. And then in addition, the capital work group has had the consultant do multiple presentations at their monthly meetings. So for our approach, we obviously look at the key priorities, which Division of Operations focuses on culture of safety and wellness as well as equitable and transparent fiscal stewardship of operations. Obviously, that's the goal of what the county commissioners was desiring in the product that they have. The tenants of the plan not only focus on, you see in the report, there's multiple comments with FCI. It talks about capacity, the age of our buildings, the adequacy of our buildings, the operational, instructional inefficiencies is something that we've interjected where we saw that there might be opportunities to adjust over time, given some of our buildings. But really trying to move from, in the first for both districts, from a short term to a long-term plan, knowing that the need is greater than the means. We know that we've got to develop a plan that puts out there to the public. If we could only do certain limited schools on the front end, we want our community to know that their schools have not been forgotten and that they are recognized. Because what you'll see tonight and I've shared in many of my presentations, we only have three schools that are really being impacted to lower the age of our facilities with new schools. But the bottom line is you could do ten to eleven schools if money was no object at this point. The need is greater and that is due to the fact that, and our county has admitted it, they just haven't adequately funded either school system for many years. And now it's like a balloon payment. It's hitting us at a point where now we have to make the best decisions possible. But we have some facilities that are hemorrhaging. They need immediate relief. We have others that we're continuing to have to provide daily and annual operational maintenance improvements. But the biggest thing for us, and I can't speak for Orange County, the biggest challenge that we have is that in order to replace schools, we didn't have very limited land on the same school sites. So you're not able, in most cases, able to build a school while the children are occupied in the existing school. So we have to somehow either find acreage that is conducive to replacing an elementary, middle or high school or we have to try to utilize or develop what's called a swing space. That is a big challenge that we have as a district and that's where some of our challenges are of how we have to decide which school we do first, second and third so that we can kind of create a gateway that allows, if you have to have friction or an inconvenience with movement of students due to creating a swing space, what can you do in order to minimize that disruption over five, ten to fifteen years of our plan, but even a second referendum? So that you're not ultimately reassigning students for future schools, but you're able to build a school, then reassign students into that school, a brand new school, and then focus on that site as the next place which you would locate. And again, the county recognizes the fact that you can develop that plan, but you have to look at it on a year by year basis because enrollment will change no matter what projections you have that they use from NC State, the county currently uses, as well as looking what WOOPR developed. You cannot predict that. And we also don't know that as we're fixing buildings, you're going to have other buildings that may have things that happened that you didn't plan on and you're going to have to pivot. You could have the air conditioning go out in a system that someone thought it was going to last five years and it only lasted three and you've got to get it fixed. So financially, we will then have to go back to the county commissioners to ask for an addendum or an amendment to the plan. And what I'm very pleased to say is earlier this week, when they approved the concept of the funding between Orange County schools and with Chapel Hill Carver, they did establish what's called the capital funding framework. And what that entails is they've actually given us direction this past Tuesday where they're telling us in Orange County schools that school capital projects will be funded based upon a consistency with the principles of the WOOPR plan. And Dr. Griffin spoke, alluded to that earlier. But that plan endeavors to replace old facilities with new facilities. But the county has said they are not interested at this point in major renovations. They're, they're at a point where the buildings that have the greatest need, they want to move towards replacing them and putting our children into newest facilities. They also want to approve the educational adequacy, the sizes of the classrooms. They were really not convinced that just renovating a school and moving walls around and then adding in addition where you have lost capacity, they really wanted to move into new buildings and to accomplish the educational adequacy. But they also said that they want us to address the high priority capital needs that WOOPR identified. And that is the work that's in the schools that are not being replaced, the roofing work, the air conditioning work, the light safety work that needs to be done for security, fire alarms and things of that nature. And they've identified those. But they did open the door to say that that plan will be reviewed annually because they understand that there needs to be flexibility. And what is approved today may not be ultimately what happens in seven years or eight years. So they want to be able to open that door, which is the greatest latitude I think that we could have in working with the county. Dr. Griffin?
Al, could you also just make the point? I think it'd be effective, the money you're talking about for the bond and for all the maintenance needs that you're talking about is completely different funding than what Jonathan just presented to us, which is operating budget annually. So people can understand that our capital needs are in addition to everything he said. We don't get to move that all around while you're talking.
Correct, and I'm looking, I just realized, this is not, this is not my presentation, it's not the updated presentation. I can, I can tell you what's not in it, but. If you go onto the actual agenda and look and click on that link. It should be right on that because I pulled it up. Yeah. Because there's a piece that I wanted to share, alluded to the fact of the responsibility that our county has. It's a separation of money.
There we go.
Thank you so much. My apologies. So the first thing that I've said to many folks is just to remind people that by statute, county governments of the state of North Carolina are responsible for the maintenance of the buildings, hence the work group. But the, the funding is through capital funding and not operational funding. So when Mr. Scott talks about paying of salaries, capital money is not used to pay salaries. You don't sell debt to pay salaries. You use cash that's generated through local funds. Whereas for us, the county's having to finance, ultimately, they came to the decision to do a three hundred million dollar bond with a hundred million additional, what they call paygo funding, which is cash funding. So the bond question itself is only going to save three hundred million as a value for supporting schools for school facility improvements in, in the county of Orange. The hundred million, it does impact your tax rate, but it's not the question that you're being asked. That is a separate tax rate. But that cash or paygo funding gives the county the ability that when they, before they sell the debt for, I'll say, the heaviest amount, the construction amount, they can use cash to pay an architect or engineer to come in to design the school. It allows it to accelerate the work that's being done. So I, I hope that answers your question. But the bottom line is it's capital money and it does not impact the operating budget within the district. However, the cost to do, many cases, general maintenance and utilities does come out of local operating in many cases. If it's small maintenance, but if all the utilities, the electric, the gas, that comes out of the local money. So if there's any opportunities to save, that money does go back into instruction. And what I will say is in operations, we would use, our goal is not to take that money and redirect it. Our goal is to take that money, put it back into instructional programming. It's local money, that's where it should be, unlike the debt financed. All right, so WOOPR's findings. Again, this is for the public who may not have ever seen the presentation. For our district, they identified that in a five-year need, it was just under three hundred million dollars in need. And for a ten-year need, it was just under five hundred and seventy-four million dollars. They placed the replacement value at one billion. So when we save five hundred and seventy-three point eight million for a ten-year need, which is what the bond plan that WOOPR created entails, out of the three hundred in bond, we only get about sixty percent of that. So it's a hundred and eighty million out of a three hundred million dollar bond that comes to our district. So when you look at a hundred and eighty million, you have to think about, a middle school costs about seventy-four million is what WOOPR estimated. An elementary school costs about forty-nine million. So in the end, what do you get? Possibly two middle schools, an elementary school, a middle school, two elementary schools. And then you have a little extra that you could redirect into maintenance, but it's not a lot. You can only do possibly three schools or three and a half, if you want to call it. But you've got schools that have needs for ten, possibly eleven schools that could be replaced if the money was there. All right. The other thing that they determined, they looked at our utilization. They use their programming, but I will tell you that the county uses NC State through the ORID group for the SAPO process. And basically what WOOPR was able to demonstrate is their predictions were very similar to what the independent results were from NC State. Little different because WOOPR used educational adequacy. Their definition was a little stricter, but they're very similar. So what this did is there was a, possibly a disbelief that the numbers that ORID was creating or SAPO was creating was. that the numbers that ORID was creating, or SAPO was creating, was preventing us from building schools. And then when we had Wolpert come in, who had no connection with ORID, they pretty much showed that the methodology and what they use as demographers were very similar, knowing that Wolpert is, does many things. But demography is an area that they have a very large division in as well. What we found is, is that today, our middle school and high schools, you see it 92 and 100% respectively, those are fair utilizations for a secondary level. But at an elementary level, and I'll say that because you have electives and you have kids that fluctuate at the secondary level, whereas at the elementary level, kids are more fixed in grade-level classrooms. They showed that we had 81% utilization, which means we've got close to 1,000 seats in our district, district-wide. And I talk about every school, but a lot of our schools where there are empty classrooms today. 1,000 seats, that equates to two full 500-student elementary schools, which is the capacity of our elementary schools. So that was just a telltale moment to say, wow, we don't have any fluctuation with potentially doing any type of adjustments in either rightsizing of our schools, but at the, at the secondary level, but at the elementary level, there is an opportunity. You know, we're operating building, two buildings more with utilities and additional maintenance costs that we may not have to consider. That was the purpose of looking at that. And then obviously, they did a projection looking at a full 10 years as well to be able to calculate that. And that information is in the reports. The Facility Condition Index, that is a percentage that basically is in the numerator, the cost to rehabilitate a school, to do all of the repairs. And then the denominator in conducting an FCI is the cost to replace the school. So if you divide that out, that percentage, if the replace cost and the repair cost is close to similar, you're going to have a very high percentage. It's just a numerator-denominator factor. The key is, though, you have to know that that doesn't put age into consideration. It just looks at a moment in time. Now I'll give you an example. Carboro High School had a very high FCI. East Chapel Hill High School had a very high FCI. The reason being, the schools have reached a point, 25, 30-year mark, where they're within a 10-year plan, where they need to have their roof replaced. They need to have the air conditioning replaced. They need to have electrical service upgraded. Substantial mechanical, electrical, and even some plumbing costs where it's time. But just because it's high, you wouldn't tear down that school and replace it because it's only 25 to 30 years old. It's just at a point where it needs to go through its first iteration. So when I have to talk with people a lot about FCI, you just can't look at that number. You have to look at the age, the educational adequacy, and then all kinds of other factors. At least put into part of that decision-making, but you just can't use the number exclusively. Our previous consultants that had worked for the district used that exclusively in ranking our schools. Wolpert did not do that. They looked at all these other factors that the county had asked them to do. So there's a little subtle difference between the two. But I will say this, for the most part, they were, they still ranked pretty close in most cases, though some schools varied because it really boiled down to the age of the building and the lesser amount of work that we had put into them over the past 10 to 15, even 20 years' time. So they are similar, but the methodologies were different. Our current Facility Condition Index, out of 19 schools, it really shows that the majority of our schools are in either the replacement, the poor, the below-average category. I've commented previously, we don't have any schools in the best. We have Chapel Hill High School that was just replaced, but I always have to remind people, the reason why that school did not make in the best because you have the auditorium building, the CTE building, and the cafeteria that are the original construction and we're not in the scope. So people ask that all the time. We just put millions of dollars into Chapel Hill. Why is that not in the best? Because we just didn't do the whole job. We go in and we fix all those things through the plan that we have presented. Chapel Hill will be in the best category because that's all that needs to be done. And you'll ultimately see with what we've proposed that we will be moving in the right direction with our 10-year plan as Wolpert has prepared. Here's just an example of limitation of land. Our schools, I use three, I use Frank Portergram, Ephesus and Glenwood as examples. At Frank Portergram, the school is landlocked. It has Morgan Creek on the south side. It has Smith Level Road on the west, and it has the bypass to the north. That school that was built in its era was able to be built that close to a creek. We know through the years that Morgan Creek has had opportunities where it has expanded and the water has come up towards the school. Enough to where we had to physically move the playground. So we know, when we talk about limitation of land, the school, if we were to put another school, a 500-student school today in 2024, the standards that we would have to fall under for DEQ requirements, for stormwater runoff management, as well as just accessibility, that's a landlocked site. And Ephesus is another example. There is the town, they have a park next to our school, but the land that we own is just very limited, and as well as even at Glenwood. This is indicative of a lot of our schools, with the exception of Colberth Middle School. The athletic programming that is on the same topography as the school would allow you to very easily replace that school if that was ultimately to be approved. And then we have, next to Morris Grove, we have land that's adjacent to that that the county owns. But when Morris Grove was opened, they designated that as part of a school park master plan, that there was land to be built, or to allow a school to be built as a middle school on that site. Everywhere else, we're very limited. This site here has a large field and it has a structure, but it's, this land here is even very difficult to consider to build a 500-student school, such as like an FPG or any of our other 500-student schools, Carboro Elementary. You wouldn't be able to fit, you could put the school on here, but you wouldn't be able to do any improvements to try to get vehicular traffic off the public roadway here. And that's the problem at FPG right now, is that the vehicular traffic creates gridlock twice a day guaranteed. Moving it here would do the same thing. But it's a matter of, we've got land, the limited land that we have for the sites that I'm using, such as Frank Portergram, if that school was to be replaced on a different location or reassigned, that would be a great location for a program. But it would not be a great location for a comprehensive 500-student elementary school. The site here would be great for an alternative school as a program because you wouldn't have the same amount of adult-parent traffic coming through as you do with our traditional schools. So I just put that, that's a challenge that we have. That challenge, the warrant and necessitates that in some of our examples, we have to create a swing space. Not for all of them, but at least in the very beginning. This is one of the reasons. I wish we had enough land beside our schools because it would be a much easier process in being able to accomplish that. So the plan, this is a slide that was added that just shows, these are all the factors that Wolpert looked at as they were making their recommendations. You know, FCI, school age were big ones, but they also looked at the utilization of the building. They looked at the physical site with our cooperation. They looked at the cost, any operational efficiencies that could be identified or not identified. They looked at our district goals, and we tried to interject. But, and then obviously, they looked at, how do you get the most kids into new schools? Because that's ultimately what the county went, tasked them to do. Show us what we got and how can we maximize our dollar within that optimization facility plan. So for us, we're taking a two-pronged approach. We know that if there's, with limited bond money to replace schools, we cannot leave our existing portfolio without having work completed. So if we're doing three schools, we have 16 other schools that still have major work that needs to be done over a 10-year period. So our two-pronged approach is to focus on the major maintenance that's identified by Wolpert, as well as looking at any operational efficiencies through the replacement consolidation of our existing schools. That's how you try to get as many students into the newest facility as possible. The, the plan, from, from a very large overview, is really, we know that the schools that surfaced, two of the schools have a dual-language program. FPG and Carboro Elementary. Those two schools are different than all of our other schools because if you have to move the school or replace the school, you just can't take the kids and just reassign them temporarily. They're programs. So in FPG, you have 500 students that are in a unique program in a comprehensive elementary school. At Carboro Elementary, you have 300 students that are within a dual-language program and 200 students that are just regular students at the school. So redistricting temporarily or reassigning students at those schools are not able to be accomplished. So in doing so, the idea of working with Wolpert was, is there an opportunity to combine dual-language into one location and try to maximize some instructional and operational efficiencies that could be desired? In looking at that, Wolpert said, the only facility you have that you could take that large number of students and put them into one would be McDougal Elementary Middle School campus. The buildings are connected. The reason they said that, not just for the size of the campus, but when they looked at our space utilization, the schools that have the greatest amount of capacity to have new students come to it were Northside, Morris Grove. And then if you took the 300 students out of Carboro Elementary and moved them to the campus, when you replace Carboro Elementary, that new school would have 300 seats available. So the idea of what Wolpert presented was, you could ultimately look at reassigning the students at the McDougal Elementary School to those schools that have capacity because it's, it's next door to them. That was their thought process in just looking at, how can you optimize? At the same time, they said, well, the middle school, what do you do with that? Their idea was, if you want to put kids in the newest facilities, you have Morris Grove, the land next to it that's just to the north of the school. The idea was to put a new middle school there and to physically just move the students from McDougal Middle, even the dual-language middle school students, because we're not suggesting consolidating middle school dual-language at all, but move all of them into a brand-new facility. And at the same time, move the students out of FPG into a newer facility, meaning getting your students out of the oldest buildings that we have, in one way, shape, or the other. So that's the concept of why Wolpert moved in this direction, because they saw that they could maximize that. Because at the same time, the county is very cognizant of the fact that we cannot expand our building capacities based upon our enrollment. That's the SAPO process. We just can't add a fourth middle, a fifth middle school and increase the capacity of middle schools because the report shows that we do not have the need to add new schools due to capacity for middle or high. Clearly, it shows that we do not have the ability to add any elementary school square footage to our portfolio as our enrollment has declined over recent years. Though I will say this, and you will see a slide. Ultimately, they are projecting over 10 years that we will grow by 300 students. Now what I will tell you is, our elementary kindergarten cohorts have been going down for the past four to five years. They show that there will be a slight uptick. And what I will say is, we have to plan for those seats. We have to ensure that even though we have 1,000 seats, we have to have, we cannot over-correct. We have the right size because those numbers could slow. And again, if you get into redistricting, you just can't say, we're going to move, if a school has 50 seats, that we're just going to move 50 students into that school. Because when you get into reassignment or redistricting, it's not a matter of just moving numbers of kids. You have to look at the neighborhoods, you have to look at the communities. You have to look at the amount of disruption that can be created, and you want to minimize all of that. So those are things that you just have to look at when, when you're making those types of decisions. That's putting the cart before the horse because we at least have to have an idea that we have the capacity. But that's the how, and that, the how is what you work through as the bond money is approved and each year as we decide how we're going to, if we're going to stick with the plan or if we're going to modify it. We then have to have a comprehensive outlook of when's the best time to make those modifications on the front end, in the middle, or possibly at the latter end of your 10-year plan. This is a slide that Wolpert has that just shows that the schools that surfaced, it shows not only the FCI, but it shows about the number of space types that they had and didn't have. It also shows the requirements for size. And that is the column for space types, for meeting size, is the one where, for most of our schools, we did not hit the mark. Our rooms, our classes are a lot smaller than current design standards across the board. I talked about not forgetting about the remainder of our portfolio. These are the categories that we are committed through the funding that I'll, I'll share in just a moment, in being able to address roofing, fire, light safety, mechanical, and electrical improvements in our schools so that they, we can do everything we can to prevent them from having any form of catastrophic failure at their school site. This is the maintenance that needs to be done. Now I will tell you, our county has done a fair job over the years in funding. It just hasn't been enough because our, we had many schools built in a certain era where there was a large population growth. So we have a lot of maintenance that's hitting us all at one time and they go through cycles. So we've just not been able to keep up. And the county has recognized that and understood that they had to make a heavy lift. Because ultimately, as we all know, they originally started the bond at 130 million. And we ended with a $300 million bond with an additional 100 million in pay-go. So they made a huge monumental step, what we will say, we try to think and act differently. They have modeled that in, in what they've done because they have made a commitment and they have become very cognizant of the needs of both school districts. This is a slide that I will not walk through to a degree, except for the fact that this is a possibility of how it could be done. But the one, the one that I will at least comment to is Estes Hills. Estes Hills, right now, the decision has been to reassign the students at Estes Hills, but the timing of that has not been determined. The building, we, we need to take the building, and again, the terminology is difficult, if it's offline, if it's not needed. But you got to take the buildings that you're pouring the greatest amount of money into. Ultimately, those are the schools, if you have the capacity, those are the schools that you have to prioritize to take offline from your inventory when the time is appropriate. But we are pouring money into FPG and Estes Hills that ultimately, we've just got to stop that hemorrhaging. The reason initially that Wolpert said not to replace Estes Hills today, and this is what I want to give a disclaimer with, we are not suggesting that if you temporarily, if you reassign students from Estes Hills at whatever point in this process, we are not suggesting that the school, that site never be rebuilt with an elementary school. The Estes Hills Phillips location is central in our district. And what I will say to folks, that is prime real estate. From a bus optimization, from a central location, you can move students to the center. And it is a vital part of our community, and we will want to keep that. The challenge we have is, you have Phillips, and we only have limited dollars in our funding. In order to ultimately build a new Estes Hills down the road, you need to take the Estes Hills site and replace Phillips first. Replace Phillips, then replace Estes Hills after that on the current Phillips Middle School site. The reason we have to do that is, our middle school capacity does not have any wiggle room where we could temporarily reassign the students from Phillips to other middle schools in order to replace their building. So that's what I call a friction or a pain point that we have to overcome. But in a slide that I will show you, let me jump to it real quick. Right here, we show that we've got two phases. And in this, in this model that Wolpert has worked with us on, you have the side on the left and the side on the right. We're focusing on the circle that's on the right, but there are schools to the right that need to be ultimately replaced. And if we're able, with the bound capacity we have, to ultimately, in the second phase of our plan, to replace or rebuild Estes Hills, then that gives us the opportunity to then take another school offline because we can redistribute students, and then we can replace another school on that school site. So I just use as an example, if we replace, in the next bond referendum, Estes Hills, build a new school, we then have to decide, are we going to focus on Soul, Glenwood, or Ephesus next? Because we would move the kids, reestablish that community school, but they would be able to reassign other students into the schools as well, to where we could empty one of those schools, and then we would tear that school down and replace it. So if you have to move kids, you'd be moving kids into new facilities rather than just distributing to multiple facilities. That's the idea so that you're not having to temporarily reassign continually. Carboro Elementary is a school that if FPG in the proposal was to be relocated or reassigned, we could use FPG as that swing site for the replacement of that school. Meaning, you move the students, once FPG moves out, you move the Carboro students into FPG for about two years. You tear down Carboro, you rebuild it, and you move the students back into the new school, and then you take FPG offline. That's the idea of trying. We don't want to keep our kids in those two schools, Estes Hills or FPG. They can go about five, maybe six years, but Wolpert says they could not recommend that we just hold students for the entire 10-year duration. That would be, that would be against their recommendation because the buildings, you're still going to have to still gonna have to pay for infrastructure and maintenance, even knowing that we just can't take buildings down tomorrow. We're still gonna have to have the cost of operating them. So, with that, this is an example of the two-phase plan, where we show the schools that have been identified for the first phase, but we also, because we want people to see that you have possibly the Lincoln Center, Glenwood Elementary, Phillips Middle, and then ultimately, Estes Hills would be a site to put a school as well. These are schools that are just as necessary to replace today, we just don't have the funding to include them in the plan. Again, 187 million only goes with so far. But we believe it would be remiss not to show this, to hold people, and to hold people like me accountable, when the next referendum comes around. There was a plan where we identified this, and the county has accepted it. So, if we decide to deviate from this, ultimately, what they accept, we and the county would have to come to an agreement, and it wouldn't be that we could just decide haphazardly not to replace a school. We put it here, so we'd have to answer to why we did not do that. Our district has never done that in the past, and things have just been reactionary and just in time. It's not a bad thing, but at least we have an idea of what we've got to accomplish so that we can educate our community over time of what our needs are, so that we can keep the pressure on, that we continually have to have new funding. Just showed that one. So, again, the tenants, we tried to check every box. Were we successful in all of the boxes and reaching?
Yep.
100%? No, we were not. The plan does not take anything into consideration, other than what's the most efficient way to optimize your buildings. So, in his example, here's where they came back and demonstrated that if you follow their plan, we would be able to, in 10 years, improve our, the numbers of schools with the Facility Condition Index, and then also reduce the age of our buildings. So, the average age of our buildings would go from 53 years to 44 years. And that's just with replacing three schools. So, the more and more we replace, the lower that we can, or the lower that age can become. Our utilization over a 10-year period with the proposed plan, Wolfert basically says, there's the capacity that we had, that I showed in the beginning, and then there's the capacity that's projected in 10 years. So, in reality, with this plan that they've created, we are losing 300 seats, but we're also going, growing by 300 seats as well. So, it takes us from an 81 utilization percent to a 91. And this is where I say, it's better to right-size and not over-correct, correct? Because if you did something higher, it would give very little fluctuation through the reassignment process, to try to do it to where you try to keep students within their cohorts, their classes, their communities. You're not able to do that when you have a very high utilization. So, that's a very comfortable utilization, and Wolfert agrees to that. But in my own experience, you really don't want to go higher than about 95% with elementary utilization. You have massive trailers at schools that are beyond just pre-K trailers, but you have capacity trailers at multiple schools, and of course, we have some, but you want to try to mitigate that as much as possible. So, for us, the next steps, we want to continue to analyze the enrollment, the sequencing scenarios, the consolidation and construction. We need to ultimately, once we agree to the projects that we're gonna ultimately move forward with, we want to hire a demographer to start looking at a holistic redistricting process, to really decide, do you need to redistrict once in this plan, or do you need to do it incrementally, so that you don't create pain points that are unnecessary? Because we do want to minimize, by our own policy, the amount of disruption that you create. So, if we could do something that prevents students from being moved twice by moving them once, and it makes sense from receiving community feedback and input, we'd want to evaluate that. And that's no different than any redistricting process that any district covers. We're gonna continue to work with our finance and instructional divisions to fine-tune any savings with the plan. Obviously, the bond education committee was selected earlier this week, we're planning to participate in that. But lastly, what I will say is, knowing that the plan and that the county hired the consultant for, knowing that it only focused on optimization, I think that the next step that we would ask of you as a board is to consider to allow our team to look at the input that we've received from the community, from you, and to be able to see how we can try to identify a plan for replacement, that for the limited schools that we can, a plan that takes the input of all of that, the how piece that we've heard, knowing that this is what the actuarial people say that you should do, if you want to call it that, but now we need to integrate it into what works best for our district. So, we would ask that you give us an opportunity to at least look at some scenarios, to bring back to you for consideration as a next step, if that's something that you would want to say. And I say that before we get into dialogue. The thing that I will say, though, in creating scenarios, is, we're not gonna be able to hit 100% on everything that anyone is asking or sharing, but I think what we would want to do is to try to mitigate as much of it as possible, and to minimize any type of additional busing, to increase walkability, to look at all of that, and include that and a variety of other things that have been shared. Try to include that and be able to show you where we think we have made gains, or where we are not making any gains, but to give that to you for consideration. I'm excited that the county has given us the opportunity, that they have not locked us in to say that the Wolfert recommendation is the only way. They're just saying that you gotta follow the principles of what they're asking. So, we just have to answer and justify why we are deviating or modifying from anything that they've recommended. So, we didn't have that three weeks ago, we just got that this week. So, it does change our, our ability to really become engaged and understanding how we can modify this. But again, I have to say, there will still be friction points. You've gotta have a swing space in some cases, and you gotta look just beyond today, you gotta look at how does this impact our district in the long term? And then we just gotta make those tough decisions. But the decisions, honestly, they're tough, but we've got schools that we just gotta do. But there's other schools, we've just gotta decide, how are we gonna manage that and plan for that in the long term? Because again, 187 million, it's a great amount of money from where we started, but same time, it doesn't get us where we need to be. So, I don't want anyone to think that this is the solve-all, but it's a huge boost to what we have not had for 15 to 20 years. So, for our next steps, obviously, on the 18th of June, the County Board of Commissioners, they have to adopt at least a tentative bond order officially, and that sets the question for the referendum, but they have told us through their action item this week, that it's not set in stone, but they gotta move forward. What it sounds like is, is the money that we have, that they have dedicated to us right now for two middle schools and an elementary school, that that money may not change. They're committing to that, which is about 187 million. That's what they're committing to. So, if we decide to do, in the end, two elementary schools and a middle school, or two middle schools and an elementary, if there's any savings within that amount, we're able to redirect that to fulfill even additional ongoing maintenance that we occur. So, we've got our pocket of money that we can work with, but we know that really, they're gonna accept about 74 million for a middle school, and about 49 million for an elementary school. So, anything that we do, those are the numbers that Wolfert has provided, based upon the sequencing that they've created, for them to be able to finance the debt service over time. So, with all that being said, I'll open it up for, obviously, questions or clarification that I could provide.
First of all, Al, thank you. And I know you've been living and breathing this since the day you got here, really. And, you know, there's probably nobody in the county that knows this better than you and your team, and I appreciate that. I want to clarify where we are before I open it for questions. If I hear you correctly, what you said is, we've got this plan, and the county commissioners need to move forward with their bond process this month. We make it official, so it'll be on the ballot in November, and we can go back to them with modifications of our plan at any point we want to, but they're, they're open to that as long as we're within the parameters of the report.
Yes.
Is that part correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, we are not fixed. We're not at a fixed point.
We are not.
Let's clarify that. So, the plan and the discussion is all part of the big picture, and you've asked us for the time and the grace to come back as soon as maybe July, June 20th, which is just the next board meeting, or into July and August with additional options that we might consider as to how the best get where we need to go?
Yeah, so it's gonna be a multiple-pronged process, and I think that what we would ask is that, give us until the next board meeting, to present with you some alternative scenarios. Clearly, when we worked with Wolfert, there were scenarios that we looked at. So, we have some, but we really want to look at some of the input that we've received in the past three weeks, just to see, are we hitting the mark or not? But what, what we would bring back to you are multiple ways, some may not be great ways, and others may appear to be palatable ways to do it, but we want to show you, as I won't say anything and everything, but we want to show you kind of the good, the bad, the ugly, to say, you can accomplish this goal, but this is how painful it might be. But then, these are goals where you can check off environmental impact, you can check off minimizing reassignment of students, and still accomplish the goal. We want to be able to give you that flexibility, to be able to see those options, knowing that the county has opened the door for us to be able to at least do that. The key is, we gotta be careful not to, I'll use the phrase, go into paralysis from analysis, because for the long-term planning, for the next referendum, I think that's what, we need to do that. We've gotta look at how we're gonna stage it, because we need to mitigate knowing that there are far more schools that need to be replaced than we're able to fund in the first referendum. But at the same time, we gotta keep this moving to where we have, ultimately, we as a school division, a district, that we have something that's palatable, that addresses some immediate needs and gets us moving forward with a bond plan. The bottom line is, the bond will help us move in that direction, but if the bond isn't, the funding does not come about due to a bond not occurring, then we just have to continue to use the general maintenance money that we have to continue just to do Band-Aid-type work, non-preventative work, it's all reactionary. So, we've gotta get something together, knowing that with the bond education committee that the county will have, as well as us having community meetings, we've gotta get something by early July, so that we can bring it to the county, so they can do an amendment, and we can move forward. So, we've gotta at least be able to do that, but that's the flexibility that we now have that we did not, if that helps a little.
No, that helps a lot, and I want to get us focused on where we're trying to get to tonight, but I also want to give everybody a chance to talk and ask their questions. So, loud and clear, you want to come back in two weeks with some other alternatives, and we can go from there, but by July, we gotta get something if we're gonna do an amended plan.
Correct. And just an additional piece, in creating scenarios with staff, if you're able to provide clarification with respect to dual-language consolidation or not, to be able to provide that, so that if we do scenarios and you believe that dual-language should not be on the table, that we just do scenarios that don't include that, to where we do FPG, the newcomers program at Northside, and then Carboro's program, we keep that separate. If you want us to come back with scenarios for both, we can, but that would just give us clarification, so that we don't exhaust energy. So, you know, obviously, Dr. Treis has staff here tonight that can answer some questions about dual-language as well, if there's questions that come up. But, but for us, knowing that, from a lot of the communication we receive, that is the pain point for probably 90% of the concern, that's a conversation to have if we want to do that as a board. And again, I'm not trying to make that decision for you or lean you in a way, but it would just help us with our staff, knowing that they're very complex, and these processes, they're not easy, and you really have to follow them to understand. So, we see it all the time, but for the public, it's challenging, because we just aren't able to just build a school while the school's occupied. We have to do a lot of moving parts in order to try to successfully do this.
Okay, well, well said. So, to my colleagues on the board, where I want us to get to tonight, before we finish tonight's discussion, is that when we put out a statement tomorrow about what we decided tonight, the public can understand it, and it's gonna be where we're headed next in the next couple of weeks, and what we're doing. Because right now, a lot of people are trying to figure out what is the plan, and what's being talked about, and it's not serving any purpose to just continue to have people sort of knowing what's going on, but not really, and then people start talking about, "I'm not gonna support the bond if you don't get me what I want." And that, that just, we don't need two more weeks of that, or six more weeks of that. So, I'm gonna push this group really hard with you, to get a clear plan of what we're doing, starting tomorrow morning. And with that said, I'm gonna open the discussion to however individual board members would like to talk. And if nobody wants to talk, we can just get on to the statement.
No, go ahead, Barbara. So, I just want to thank everybody who has spoken tonight, and has written all the emails, and had all the meetings, and I really just want to say especially thanks to George, 'cause he, I, he's just been working really hard, and has, and I, I can't imagine anybody else who could have gotten us through, so I wanted to do that publicly. It seems like by everyone's admission, what Wolfert was tasked to do was, was look at building, buildings, facilities, right, optimization. And what we're hearing from folks is that there are other values that we want to have considered in what we decide to do. And I feel like it might be helpful for us to have a little bit of a discussion about what those values are, so that when you go back to make up your other scenarios, you're not just like picking five, and then we come back and start, start from scratch. And so, to me, like what I have heard over and over is, I mean, a couple of things. One, that it seems like we're trying to infuse programming decisions, like i.e. dual-language, into this, and maybe we shouldn't be doing that. Secondly, I do think there should be a racial equity impact of whatever we end up doing. Third, I mean, Town of Chapel Hill has complete communities, Carboro has, Carboro connects. I feel like those, those are really comprehensive urban planning documents that our decision should be at least informed by. I think it's probably a good idea to have an intergovernmental, like task force ad hoc with people from those bodies on it. There's infrastructure, I mean, the sidewalks on Estes, the greenways, like there's just stuff that's, that Wolfert doesn't, I don't think, knew about, and, and it should be taken into consideration when we're making these decisions. Transportation, I mean, what, how do we maximize, you know, people's ability to get to school quickly? I do think it does need to be said that you can't have necessarily walkability and diversity. I mean, we had pretty intense residential segregation in this, these two towns, and so, somebody's walkability is, you know, something's gotta get there, and so I feel like we need to just acknowledge that those are trade-offs. And then, I guess, the, you know, there's safe routes to schools, which is in the mix too, which I think our conversations should be informed by. And are we adequately considering the new housing that's, that's being built in both Chapel Hill and Carboro? So, I just offer that as a start. And, oh, lastly, this is kind of a separate point, but I do think we need some kind of fiscal oversight, ongoing thing. Like, like, once this money, assuming it gets voted on, I do agree, I do think we need to have like an advisory council, or a task force, or somebody who's kind of making sure that this money is, is being responsibly spent. And so, those are sort of my values, that I, I think we need like a rubric, some way to kind of make this decision. And then I guess I'll just, in terms of what I think we should end with tonight, is just a commitment to saying, "We don't know." Like, we're leaving this meeting, saying, "This is just one of many possible scenarios, and to be continued." That's all I have to say.
Well, gosh, I spend a lot of time talking about facilities and have been, or since I joined the board, and even before. And, and what I have done as the chair for Finance, Facilities, and Operations, and also serving on the Capital Needs Work Group, I've taken the time to go visit all of our schools, every single one of them, some of them multiple times. But, and, and that's, that's a really important thing to do, because, especially in these meetings, when only certain people come out, and so we only hear from some segments of our community, so it's a great opportunity as a board member to hear and actually see what we're talking about. We see the billion-dollar need of our community, right? And so, I just want to make sure as a board member, I'm communicating. I know my fellow board members, they hear me talk about it, sometimes about the school visits. And, and the reality is, I know it's simple to say, "Well, you know, this school is fine. I like it. My school is fine. It's great." But I can tell you, a lot of our schools are just not okay. It is a significant difference to walk into a 60-year-old school and one of our 20-year-old schools. It's just, it's different. It's just, it's it's different when you look at some of the classrooms, the size, the things that our staff have to do, they'll do it. We have wonderful staff, wonderful administrators, they make magic happen every single day with sandbags and everything, okay? But they shouldn't have to. So so to so that's why I can't say enough to our community, please stop saying you're not gonna vote for the bond, please, please, please. Your neighbors across town need a new school. And I get it, your school is great and you like walking to it, but please believe me, you have neighbors across town who their kids are not going to school in great schools. You have teachers who are going to school in old schools where they have to deal with HVAC issues, drafty things, outward-facing doors, which are a huge safety concern, and so many other things. It's 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 great that your school is great, but we are a school district, we're a whole school district, and we've got to look out for all of our neighbors, all of our kids. And you know, so that's that's why it's just like it's really important for me as a school member to see that because obviously we're hearing from certain schools in our district and the majority of our schools in the district aren't even here tonight talking about their schools. And they are the ones who are like, we want this bond to happen because, oh my gosh, our schools are just not great, please, 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 we need this money. I get it, the plan isn't isn't necessarily perfect, no plan is. I mean, we keep talking about our strategic plan and this plan and that plan. Plans are, can be adjusted, but let's make sure we come to the table talking about, from a board perspective and community perspective, just being clear in terms of this is what's important and leave it at that. We don't have to get mad at each other and it's it's not necessary, right? Because we're all here because we're committed to Chapel Hill and Carborough and we've got a big task as a board and we're doing a big ask of our community for three hundred million dollars and a hundred million pay as you go, right? Because the need is there, it's been kicked down the can for far too long and the time is right now. Um I appreciate Barbara, what you said about our values. I do want to be careful because sometimes when we do values, we start to structure these weird things with a plan. And so I just want us to be careful that we don't go too hard and fast and we go to tables and say, these are our values and we make that the key part of our decision-making because then we can create really inefficient plans that end up being pretty wasteful, right? And they don't really ultimately solve some of just the greater needs that we have. We have some real needs. And I know some people are like, a school is not a facility. We're talking our budget, right? That's why I was like highlighting some things to the community, they're not silos, right? Our facilities are not a silo from our staffing and our operational budget challenges. I mean, I've been spending all these years talking about this stuff and I can't convey this enough to the community. You can't just say, oh, well, it's great to be able to walk to my school or don't consolidate this program because we've got some opportunities where we've got to make some adjustments. We've got to make some real hard adjustments right now. And that's not like the only lens we're looking at, but it's the uncomfortable seat that the seven of us sit in right now because it's like a lot of people get mad at us, but we've got to balance that and make sure we can keep and retain as much of our staff and pay them the wage that they deserve. And yet it doesn't, it's not just buildings, it's not just that, it's all of these things together. So you know, for me, you know, I I want us to have a plan that can work for us. This one is kind of the first set, it's setting the table of a plan. And then we can go there, we can switch plates and the cups and the glasses and reset the table if we need to or not, or whatever, I don't I don't really know. So you know, I mean, but I just want us to be careful when we're infusing a lot of values sometimes when there's some real hard things that we're up against in terms of finances and the reality of it and like landlord options. I mean, it just, it's just really tight here. I mean, we know it from from homes and things like that, it's really tight here. And so our our options sometimes get really limited and it's not fun and we have to do it because our kids can't keep going to school, our staff can't keep going to school in old buildings and and I just, I just really want this, for me, I just really want this bond to come. Because here's the thing, I mean, I'll put it there, it's like really small, it probably should be bigger. If the bond doesn't pass, then our Finance Facility and Operations Committee, where we're getting these updates about all the Band-Aids they're doing, so if you have time on the Tuesdays when we have our FFO meeting, just tune in. They're just gonna be putting more and more Band-Aids and that Band-Aid list is gonna go from this to this, and that's all they're gonna be doing until another bond passes. So and I'm happy to sit through it and champion our facilities team for all the great things they do, but that that's what's gonna happen and it's it's really tough. I mean, it's tough to go into schools and while I'm doing a school visit, they're putting out an emergency in a school because something's happened with the plumbing and it doesn't smell great. And so thank goodness, some of our, a lot of our kids go to schools where they don't have that issue, but there's a lot of our kiddos who do and staff who have to work in it and they deserve better too.
Mayor Mike, anything you want to add to Pascal, what's that?
I don't know how I can really speak after that. I think there's some really good points that we should all seem to heart there. One thing that occurred to me, and I think Risa was kind of getting at this and what she just said is maybe just talk a little bit, if you could, about the relationship between the capital needs and the operating budget and I think the efficiencies that would, just for an example, there's a lot of these, but just as one example, one reason why we're talking about consolidating dual-language is to create some of these efficiencies, right? Like the, you know, you you would have a a completely bilingual staff, for example, that could service our families better who maybe don't speak English as a native language. So that affects our operating side. So you could make, you could make decisions on the capital side that then have an impact on our operating side also.
Yeah, um so I mentioned about the utilities, when you have two buildings that you're running, but but realistically, from a, from a, an employee's standpoint, by bringing programs together, say for dual-language, we have class caps that we have to follow. And when you hit a certain number, you have to open up another section or or hire another teacher. By combining, you may find that you don't have to hire that additional teacher because you have staff that are there because there's synergy in bringing everyone together to where you're not just having to separate the two. Clearly, uh you know, what I don't want to send a message is that means a teacher's gonna lose their job. The key would be that if we plan this over time and we know what's happening, we can work with our employees to identify that. Uh the the other with just consolidation, if you take a school off of line and you reassign the students, the teachers follow, the staff follow the students for the most part. It's not that you're doing a move the students and you're not gonna have teachers following them. But what there is some ability to at least evaluate is we have positions that are assigned not by average daily membership or student population, but positions that are assigned by school. So you might have, I just use an example, and I'm trying to set up a firestorm here, but you have a data manager at every school. We have a data manager at a high school that has the same workload as a data manager at an elementary school, to the best of my knowledge. But if you combine redesign, reassign or redistribute students and you take a school potentially out of the inventory, you may not have to fill all of those positions because you may not need to. Now, what I'll say is, you may find in the example with combining dual-language, you may have two bookkeepers, but you may not be able, the size of the school may require that certain positions, you just can't go from two to one, you might need a one-point-five, you might need two. But there's at least an evaluation that you can go through to see if there's any efficiencies with that. But at the same time, you have resources and again, the instructional side is just whatever instructional program is being adopted or used, you just have efficiencies and teachers are able to rely upon each other. You know, for us, one of the things that we saw is for the the newcomers program at Northside, I want to say there's about thirty-five, thirty-nine, I'll say thirty-five to forty students. And my understanding is those are children that come to our district, they have very little knowledge of their native language, let alone English language. So they have a program for them where they receive intensive support to get them where they need to be in the quickest time possible because they're held to the standards that all of our kids are. They're an outlier because we have capacity issues where FPG is full, Carborough is full. So they have to be by themselves, so they have people working with them, supporting them. But imagine if those children were in a school where it's combined and you have a wealth of all of those human resources that exist. It just allows for that efficiency and it allows for uh children to be able to, when someone needs to cover a class, you've got another teacher who has a command of that language that can do that. It's just, there's just efficiencies there that that come about. Aside from the fact um that ultimately what we're proposing, it allows us to take one of our oldest buildings that has greatest needs that Walbert identified, it's about taking that building offline so that we're just not pouring in the local operational maintenance money and utility so that we can redirect those funds into instructional programming and not maintenance. Uh because we have capital money that can be financed for large-scale maintenance, so it's, there's a lot of opportunity there. And again, I don't want to, we have not predetermined anything, we just know that there's potential. And it's a, that's a conversation that has to happen, and if we do this the right way, you can do it over time. So it's planned, it's informed, and it's not just ripping up a Band-Aid and making something happen overnight. In no way, shape or form, in any of our plans that we will bring to you, would we suggest that you rush to judgment and just make a very fast decision. The biggest challenge that we have is depending upon whatever scenario, when would potentially reassignment or boundary changes need to occur? And ultimately, who would that impact? That's, that's the rub because that's where parents have to understand, my child, they're at this grade today and this is in four years, where will my child be? Will I have two children impacted because I have one that hasn't entered school yet or will I, or will none of my children be impacted? That's a piece, but we have to wait until that's the next step when you hire a demographer to start looking at that, that piece. But I hope that for at least from an operational efficiency, those are just a few examples. And again, uh from the instructional side, again, our dual-language folks can provide any sug- input that you may need from them.
Thank you. And um one other point I wanted to make as well is about the educational adequacy comment um about buildings because I think a lot of the focus is spent on, you know, we have things that are very physical in nature like leaks, um mold growing, like things like that, but I can't remember who brought this up, but it really spoke to me. We also have to think about education, educational adequacy in terms of things like special education services. Uh making sure that, you know, buildings like, you know, I went to Estes Hills, so I'm a big fan of Estes Hills and, you know, I wish it could stay around forever on the same spot. But I know what it looks like, I've taken a tour of it recently and it looked exactly like it did when I was in kindergarten in nineteen eighty-one. So in nineteen eighty-one, they're very unlikely to have a building that had OT rooms and PT rooms and speech therapy rooms and special education classrooms and, you know, things like that that they would build into a new, modern building. And so that is something else that I think is really important to consider.
Absolutely.
Facility needs.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, that's where you look at the way a school was designed in nineteen fifty-eight compared to the way a school was designed in two thousand twenty-four. Just as everyone walked or rode a bus to school back then, we, many districts have to create more vehicular traffic stacking because more parents, because of their work-life situation, bring their kids to school. So you have to adjust. And when it comes to EC, especially in any outside services, the schools did not have those at the time, but I can I can go to almost any EC classroom that has um children that have specific disabilities or behaviors and there are multiple spaces within a very small room where they have space for one child because they need to have that space and have it designed a certain way, they have certain um stimulations that that allow that child to perform based upon their IEP. And then you have equipment, adaptive equipment that may come in, you have staff that may be assigned to work with those students. You may have interpreters that come in, you may have occupational therapists, and they're all in a room that was designed in nineteen fifty-eight. So most schools, when it comes to having meetings, they're having meetings in, and I'll say this in a very generalistic way, they're taking old closets and they're converting them into small offices where they can sit down with one or two parents and to have meetings because they don't have meeting space. So when you look at educational adequacy and the types of rooms, that's where we and Orange County failed because they said, you need to have this many rooms for support services, you need to have this much room for pull-out remediation so that you can do prescriptive tutorial work and learning with children. And we didn't have any of that, aside from the fact that they may say a room has to be nine hundred and fifty square feet and our rooms are seven hundred and fifty square feet. You have both of that in our older schools and some of our newer schools as well.
Not to mention accessibility. I mean, we, we took me on a tour of FPG and there was a wheelchair ramp that was, I mean, it looked a little scary, it was not adequate.
Yeah, the, the topography of our, when our schools were built, ADA was not taken into consideration. It was not, the topography of our schools is challenging at best at many of our schools. And we have to adapt and adjust when we have children that have those needs and it's a, it's a continual upkeep. But replacing our schools and building them to current international building code, which has all of that, that's another benefit that comes. And and our staffs make tremendous efforts to make accommodations for our students each and every day. And then there are some students that are not able to attend certain schools and we give them the option to go to other schools because it's easier for them and it's just more conducive because maybe being outside to go from class to class just doesn't work with their IEP and what challenges they have, they need to be in an indoor environment. But we have a lot of campus-style schools where the fire egress is the the door to the classroom and the way you would get out of that room. There are no halls and corridors and back in the fifties and the sixties, that's why they designed campus schools because you didn't have to spend twenty-five to thirty percent on interior hallways and corridors. You saved money because your corridor was the sidewalk outside the classroom. Today's school, with safety and with environmental sustainability, that design just doesn't, it's not conducive, it's not best practice. Even in California and San Diego, they are not building campus-style schools in their public education and it, you know, rarely rains out there. They're not doing it because of safety ultimately.
I did want to highlight, Barbara, I appreciate what you said about um, you know, not focusing our facility stuff on programs. I know I've said that a couple of times, our buildings need to be looked at as buildings, right? Because the program stuff gets a little wonky and out and I think when you asked about what things we need to think about, when you do need to think about the buildings as facilities, not necessarily from a program perspective, it gets really tricky when we start talking about the programs only.
Yeah, my, I don't know if I answered this right, but my take is, it doesn't matter who we educate, all of our children and staff deserve to be in a building that is si- clean, safe, and up to standards that allow them to do their job and for our children to learn across the board. And that is our greatest challenge because our buildings have gotten to the point to where there's greater need than, again, we have means. I say that a lot, but it's true and and we've just got to start the process in order to get it done. But no matter who you are, you should be in an environment that is equitable to any other environment. When it comes to the physical building and the attributes that we need to have for any, any building that our public comes into. And that's across the board, across the country. School districts have that challenge because schools are underfunded, not just here, but everywhere. And you would think it would be different because that's our core business, to house and educate children. And that's no different than a bank, their core business is to use technology. That is their core business, is IT, so they invest in IT. Our core business is educating and housing children, but as a whole, as a country, we do a poor job in housing our children who spend six to seven hours every day for one hundred seventy-eight to one hundred eighty-five days a year on average in our country. We do a poor job of that. And but our students here deserve better. They are clearly learning and flourishing in our schools and the facility is not holding them back, but it does create barriers and challenges and adjustments on a daily basis. But clearly, our children are performing in our schools. So it's not the, it's not the building that allows all of the learning to occur, but indoor air quality, lighting are definitely contributors to promoting best instructional practices, aside from space. Flexibility and space is a key piece.
Joking on what Risa said, because I think too, you're also addressing, we have an obligation to to the fifty-year future of our district. We need to leave, we need to put a building in place that has multiple possibilities twenty and thirty years out. We can't afford to design one so unique for a program that if the program changes in the next decade, we've left the district with a bit of a white elephant, so to speak.
So I'll use it, I'll use FPG as an example. If you decided to build another FPG somewhere on site, just replace the school, my take would be that we have at the elementary level eight hundred and fifty strong enrolled in dual-language Spanish immersion. That is huge. Out of eleven thousand students, that is huge. That is huge. We know that the program is not going to go away anytime soon. But I would suggest that when we design that building, we do things like put as many bathrooms in classrooms as we can. Make the rooms to where they're not dedicated maker spaces, but they're rooms that have water, sinks, good lighting, and space so that you can pivot and adapt. You know, in a secondary school, when you put fixed chemistry furniture in a classroom, that becomes the chemistry classroom for the life of that school. You need to put flexible furniture in there so that that chemistry lab could pivot and be a math class, or pivot and be an English class, or just be transformed into something else. But when you, when you put limitations on your design, and that's the biggest difference in modern-day design versus traditional school design, is that space flexibility is with that. And all I'll say is, go to Chapel Hill High School and look how that was designed because that was designed with that in mind. And we would want to replicate that because you need to be able to adapt. Because our principals and our school leaders now, when they adapt in their older schools, they're using closets to have meeting rooms. They're using former conference rooms to be a small class with one or two children so that they have time to be able to be instructive away from other kids where that was a conference room. Then they don't have places to be. Anyone walking into schools, and I know many of you, we all do school tours, you've seen this and the challenges. And it is night and day between our older schools and our newer schools. And I'll say our principals, they have been very flexible in the older schools and they make it work. But it's at what point do you decide who you need to stop and who you need to reset for them?
So since you brought it up, I think it's important, the numbers. Because, yeah, the, the program, dual-language program is amazing and the population of kids' numbers is amazing. You used eight hundred for immersion, but aren't there, and Helen might answer this better, aren't there like fifteen hundred kids enrolled in dual-language?
Yeah, so.
I mean, that's a phenomenal number.
At the middle school level, there's about three hundred and fifty split between McDougal Middle and Culver. So three fifty plus.
So this is a big deal for us.
It is. You know, we talked a little bit about, could you put middle school into this plan? And the problem, you can't because children at the secondary level need to have electives. And you can't offer the same qual, number of electives and opportunities if you had them combined. It just doesn't work. But it's, it's very strong. It is implicated within our school community, and I don't see that changing, given the strong numbers. There is a lottery. We, or children apply then get accepted as a whole for the immersion program. So, you know, other than that, Helen can answer any questions beyond that. I don't want to cross my line, but I want to, over time, I want to be able to hit.
It's in the mix, yeah.
Just follow-up Spanish questions, because you asked specifically, do we want dual-language or not? Right, and so I guess I just do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So, so multi-language learners are like our biggest, fastest-growing population, right? Or one of the, okay.
I'm going to defer to them to answer any things outside of my lane.
Well, we've had an increase of, I think, sixty percent of our newcomer population since twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. So it's, our, that population is absolutely exploding.
I mean, isn't your view that if we would improve student outcomes of those students if they were all together?
Absolutely. Hundred percent.
And could you just explain why, I guess?
Well, if you're just talking about newcomers, or if you're depending on.
Well, let's start with newcomers.
Okay, so newcomers are very important to our population because they require a nurturing, it's called the affective filter. They need to have a very low affective filter where they are nurtured and they feel safe and have enough English to gain those wings and then fly. And so we need teachers and educators who are trained in trauma-informed instruction. Because that's another shift that we've had with our newcomer population recently. I just said that our population had grown by sixty percent in terms of psych students. Psych students are students with interrupted formal education. So you're talking about students that are coming from war-torn countries. And it takes very special training to understand and instruct those students and provide them with, not only, we have talked a lot this evening about safety, but it's physical safety, also social and emotional safety. And so having newcomers and having the teachers and educators that have the specific training is really, really, really critical. And as a matter of fact, we do serve our Spanish-speaking newcomers at FPG. Because we also know in terms of language acquisition, having students learn or bridge two languages by way of their own dominant language is best practice. And so that's one of the reasons why we find it very appealing to have newcomers. And, and Mr. Sharuki spoke to this point, having students that are north-side, are newcomer students, also with our newcomers and dual-language students at FPG is an example.
And then, but with dual-language, I know it's really popular, but you, there's a cap. I mean, it has to have a certain balance, right, in order for it to fulfill its main function, which is help non-native. Right, like you can't just have eighty percent English speakers and twenty percent.
That's correct. In, in our, in this district, we do what is called a two-way model. And we try to keep the fifty percent of the students are Spanish-dominated, in the case of Spanish dual-language, and fifty percent are English-dominated. Some, there are one-way programs, it's not best practice, so for us, having that two-way immersion is priority.
I would also add just very quickly, I know, I think it was maybe in March of last year, don't quote me on that, but we did share an update with the board that highlighted the Cal report that was done some years ago. But we also worked with Magnet Schools of America to kind of help us, you know, hone our goals and, you know, the reasons that we're doing this, the various models that we have in our dual-language program. And at the time, I think all of that was great, but at the time, the board also expressed the desire for us to explore kind of increasing the number of slots that would be available for dual-language students. And so I know that's something we're certainly, look, I'm not saying that, you know, a particular model speaks to that over another. But as we move forward, especially in looking at the recommendations from the Cal report, Magnet Schools of America about, you know, how we can enhance our programming, certainly expanding those options would be something that we would want to do at the elementary level. And I know that would put, you know, some pressure at the, at the middle school level, but, you know, that's the good kind of pressure we would want in our district.
Helen, I'm going to, with some trepidation, ask my next question. On the plan that has been discussed for the past few weeks that's out there, there's a plan to build a new middle school at Morris Grove and relocate the dual-language program to McDougal campus, both schools. Would you care to speak to the merits of that? Because forget transportation issues and community issues for just a minute. Just programmatically, would you care to venture?
Absolutely, and Miss Holley, jump in at any point. I think it's important to note that right now, the way things are, FPG and Carbo Elementary have two models that, though are both dual-language models, they're very different. FPG is a full-school model. Carbo Elementary is considered like a strand model. One of the biggest differences is at FPG, students start with a ninety-ten language allocation, which means ninety percent of the day in kindergarten, students are learning Spanish and ten percent English. That's different than Carbo Elementary, it's fifty-fifty. And so just in that alone, it's very, it's starkly different. Another big difference is that FPG, all of the electives are taught in Spanish, with the exception of art. And at Carbo Elementary, the electives are all in English.
So except for world language.
Sorry, yeah. So you can see just, they're both dual-language, but they're very, very different. And from that particular standpoint, there, it, we could probably improve a lot if we had the capability to be better aligned. And it's not that we're doing anything incorrectly, it's just a matter of the different program and space and also schedule. With the fifty-fifty model, you can better utilize staff by, and this you may have to jump in, sorry. You can better utilize your staff if you have one English-speaking teacher and one target language teacher. Because you're able to serve one group of students and then flip-flop through the day. Whereas at FPG, the teachers are fully bilingual and they are, they have the ability, due to the schedule, they have the ability to do both the English instruction and the Spanish instruction in that, that classroom. Did I, did I, okay. Did that, does that help?
Yeah, so, and, so I'm, and I'm asking literally about the campus. Is moving the dual-language program to McDougal a viable option in your opinion?
To one, to one school, to one side.
To one school, okay, one side, yeah. That's what the community's talking about.
Yes.
And I want you to give us your best thought.
I think there are lots of, I think we would have a wonderful opportunity to improve upon the, the dual-language program that we have now. It's not just the space or the language allocation, but there are things like professional learning. Right now, at Carbo Elementary, when you do professional learning, really, you have to do professional learning for the traditional side of the school, but also the dual-language side of the school, if that makes sense.
One last tribe to, and I appreciate this. If the facility were built at Morris Grove and that was where dual-language went, same answer?
Absolutely.
And so you don't, it's not the precision of the location, it's just, we got to get these kids together with the staff.
I would say that that's probably a very, I think, I think it's a wonderful opportunity and it would be a very wise move, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Given the late hour, I just have a few things quickly to save some food for thought. For, I think what Georgia's trying to say then to get, was basically, with, do you two agree that if dual-language is in one location, wherever that is, it's a better situation? So I think that's what we were trying to say, not to attach it to any of our specific nineteen schools. A centralized location, okay, that was the one thing. Next, I'd like to say, from being historically a generational resident of Orange County, I, I have to say that we as residents of Orange County, we all need to realize that the bond is for schools and facilities in Orange County. And if you go to school, if our children go to school in Chapel Hill-Carbor City Schools, we're still residents of Orange County. We, we can't continue to think of ourselves as Chapel Hill and Carbo residents and then the rest of Orange County. We're all Orange County. We may be two separate school systems, but we are residents of Orange County. And we have to really think about that when we're looking overall, that if our county is doing better, we're doing better. There are certain pieces of the county where the population explodes at different points in time. And we have to realize that it may be the northwestern corner this year, but it may be the southeastern corner in ten, fifteen years. And I just say that to say that we have to really pay attention when we're starting to just talk about neighborhood schools and things of that nature. Because I promise you, if you start going back to look in the history of both districts and primarily the one on the southern end us, the schools weren't neighborhood schools when they were being built. I mean, I remember when the McDougals were built, and I love the McDougals, my children went through it, I did not. I went to Carbo Elementary because when I went to school, that was the woods. It was the woods, and I promise you, none of you had neighborhoods around those woods because they weren't there, it was farms. It was either woods or farms, Carbo Plaza didn't exist, so that wasn't the case either. When Chapel Hill High went from Franklin Street to High School Road, it was woods, nobody was walking there. So we have to be careful when we're talking about walkability, we have to be careful when we're talking about our school made our neighborhoods. Well, it kind of, they kind of do because it's built it and they will come, like the field of dreams. They built schools and our towns and neighborhoods grew to where the schools were. When they first built east, Weaver Dairy Road was the country. It wasn't anything out there either. So, well, the park predated it, but other than that, it wasn't a whole lot out there. So I'm just saying that to say that our community, if we're looking out for each other and taking care of each other, the building won't be as important to you. I understand being attached to, to some schools, because I went to most of the elementary schools here in the building, I mean, here in our town. But I will say, falling down the hill to Estes Hills wasn't the funnest thing. Having to walk outside and all of a sudden it started sleeting and you realize you fall on the sidewalk right after you walk out your building because that's the sidewalk, that's not a fun thing either. And we also have to think about our school buses. When our schools that are that old were built, the school buses were shorter. Everybody in here I know hasn't driven a school bus, but once upon a time, they weren't as long as they are now. So it's harder in some of those older facilities of ours, just with our existing bus circles, to maneuver buses. I'm not trying to take anything away from the drivers, but I know what it is like to drive the shorter ones and to drive the longer ones with the existing bus circles and with the way the roads are with our older schools. And it does make it more difficult. I know what it's like to know that when, as the water has shifted and changed in our community, that our playgrounds are not always the best situations. I've seen what it's like in Frank Portigram when that water comes up. It, it's, these things matter and our kids deserve, and we have the ability to put them in a safer, better situation, then we should do it. I can remember when Phillips didn't have any AC, when it was over a certain temperature, you had to get out of school and go home. It's just what it was. So things have to change. And if someone said that we're in a town where we have a prominent university, well, you know, UNC didn't always look like that. UNC healthcare, when it was North Carolina Memorial Hospital and had asbestos on the ground floor. Guess what? People realized that you had to build some more buildings and that's what makes a university continue to grow and thrive. So if we're going to be good participants, good community members and look out for each other, we have to realize we need each other to, to grow. And I just say that to say, please don't think of us as a silo that we're only trying to do what's best for your neighborhood or your neighborhood or your neighborhood. And think of us as a collective and that we are Orange County residents. We are not Chapel Hill and Carbo residents voting for a bond and everybody else in Orange County. No, no, no. We are all one and we need to work on this together so we can figure it out for the long term. So in fifty years, they won't be looking back saying, well, it makes sense because that was just the way our neighborhood was then. I, I mean, you know, go back and look what fifty years ago looked like around here. But I can tell you, if you go back to the sixties and the seventies, people were already being bused. Everybody wasn't being able to walk. And then some of those ones who could walk, they had to stop walking because they got gentrified out of northside anyway. So, you know, that's a whole nother story for a whole nother day.
So Al, in terms of our goal here, is you've asked to come back in a couple of weeks with some other alternatives. Do you have, what else do you need from us tonight that would be helpful to you?
So I posed the question in the scenario, is dual-language or not, and kind of what I'm hearing from the comment, that I will bring back both scenarios.
Yes.
I will say this, for dual-language consolidation, we've got about two that I can come up with to be able to put those three programs all onto one campus. But when it comes to without consolidation, I think we'd be able to come up with some solutions so that you can weigh the two and to be able to compare those. I think we could create some form of a, a chart that may show some of the values that we have heard and to be able to let our staffs look at that to see, and I'll kind of use a stoplight approach to where we see that it doesn't help, it's amber or, you know, it's red, amber, or green from a, a staff perspective. But for the, for only really about six business days' time before we have to get an agenda and all of that, I think that's what we can do so that you can at least look at something and see. And I'll use an example, if we call the, what we've, Wolpert created for tonight, option one, we'll be able to show you kind of a dashboard that says how much red, amber, and green, or for some of the values that we've done. And then we can show the other options and show that to you. So graphically, you can kind of see where something's hitting the mark and meeting the most need versus not meeting it. I think we can do that for you. The caution I'm going to give is the scenarios are going to be complicated because it's moving lots of parts. There'll be a few that are simple, it's just, you do this, do this, but you're not doing this. And maybe we said we were going to do that and you're not going to do that. But then it's going to be, you got to do this to set the stage to. But then it's going to be, you got to do this to set the stage to do that, and then to do this, and then you got to consider redistricting somewhere here. We'll do our best, but it will be, we're going to try to present it in a graphical way, but I just want to prepare you. I have eight scenarios, there's going to be a lot, you're going to have to under, it's going to take a lot to comprehend it, because even the one plan that Wolfert created, you know, it took option C and a little of option D and it put it together to try to come up with the most optimal way to get the most kids into new school. And that's complicated at best already. So, you know, it's just, there's just a lot of moving parts. So, I think I could, we can provide that to you. That'd be my pleasure, too, because I think that that is the first step in being able to take feedback from all the feedback that we've received and try to put that into something that shows you what type of pivoting could be there so that you can make, start moving in the right direction.
Okay. And to my colleagues on the board, board members, this is a question, and, and for Andy's sake, we are agreeing that you're coming back with some more alternatives for us to continue the discussion. We are not making a decision one way or the other on June twentieth, unless by some miracle, everybody just said, oh, my God, that's it. But it's way tougher than that.
Yeah.
And we are moving into the summer. We need to get something done in late July, early August, because we're going to take something back to the county commissioners in order to move this bond along. Is that?
Correct.
So, we may need an extra board meeting or two in July, but we'll get there when we get there.
Yeah. The process would be that ultimately, whatever we come to a landing with, we've got to take it back to the county commissioners to have them amend, or at least acknowledge and say that, that's great. What I will do, to the best of my ability, is to work with Orange County general government staff, be it budget, finance staff, who have championed the Wolfert plan for the county, to say, to talk with them about some of the scenarios that I would bring to you so that they could say, they believe they would support this, this, and this, based upon the principles of the Wolfert study, but these are questions that they might have. So, I at least present that. So, I'm not just giving you something, and then we take it over to the county, and they're like, no way. I want you to know that this is where it may give them a little consternation, but, or, they're good, because you're, you're meeting the needs. And our goal will be to develop scenarios that all meet the needs, because that, there's no point in giving you a scenario that they're not going to approve. Because they, they drew the line in the sand with both school districts this week in saying, this is, these are, these are the guardrails you're going to follow. And in fact, you know, Orange County, Orange County Schools was told which projects they were going to do based upon the Wolfert plan as well.
So, to the board members, you're comfortable in, leaving it at this point right now? I'm seeing nods, yes, and you're comfortable?
Can I just ask one clear question? When you prepare the information about the different choices and the different impacts and kind of pros-cons sort of list, can you include things, and I think you've already said this, but I just wanted to make sure, things that kind of indicate what the impact would be on, or the likely impact would be on traffic? Kind of a racial equity impact assessment? Even if it's, it doesn't have to be super elaborate, but I just want to understand kind of what the different scenarios would show. And a lot of people talked about McDougal as being very walkable. What is the reality in terms of numbers? So, can we see some data on how walkable it is compared to other, other options? Just so that we understand the, the scope of the impact.
So, so I think we'll be able to, from using our transportation, they will be able to let you know if an idea allows there to be walkability around an existing school or not. I'm not going to be able to tell you that three hundred kids can walk versus a hundred and fifty, because that's going to take a ton of-
No, 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 I understand.
But yeah, definitely, you know, we want to show, does it, does it potentially increase busing? Does it increase the number of routes? Does it increase or decrease the walkability with the plan? Those are things that we have heard resoundingly, and that we will want to include. But at the same time, does it include major student movement? Reassignment, is it necessary or not? You know, you might have a, a plan where you reassign one school, they have five hundred kids in it. But another plan may have a school that has three hundred and two kids in it. There would be less children that you have to reassign in, in one alternative. So, we would show that and say, this one, if it's five hundred kids, that might be a red dot. But if there's only three hundred kids that you have to reassign, that might be a green dot. You know, we're not going to have many schools that are below three hundred, right? But you'd want to show that, so at least you know what type of impact it has. And then you know if you're kind of going in the right direction. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. So, we're clear on what we're doing and the process at this point?
We are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And the last thing I just got to say, knowing that it's a very quick turnaround, I think realistically, we might be able to get an abstract posted, but I think the actual presentation, we might need all the way up until the day of the meeting to show that, just because it's going to take a lot to get it right, and aside from just what we upload. Just want to put that disclaimer out there. We need to get as much time as we can so that you have the information.
We appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Al.
Appreciate it.
One last question, anybody need to share anything tonight? We're not going to formally eject everybody. Don't blame me, because we're late here tonight.
Chair? I mean, we do have our finance facility and operations committee meeting on Tuesday, five-thirty. It is virtual, still hashing out the agenda. Hopefully, I'll see a draft come around for me to review tomorrow. But, I mean, we'll get our facility updates like we do every single month. So, plus probably some more talks about finances at some point, I don't know. But, yeah, so, please come and tune in, so you can hear what we talk about every month when we talk about finances and facilities.
All right. Here, nothing else, obedience adjourned.